Hey Bob.
Bob, this is Russ Vollmer. I think we messed up the word.
Thanks, sir.
Did you call that?
I didn't.
I don't know why. He knows better.
I know, yeah.
This meeting is July 9th, 2014, Wednesday.
Did the roof change?
Yeah.
There's nobody.
Good.
Right here at nine, probably.
We've done it a couple of times here in Jeff City. It's a real problem to keep it within its limits. Initial, but I mean, nothing's still fixed.
Have we, have we, hey, have we technically called the insurance company or we just called Rick Knott?
We have.
Well, I mean, he keeps delaying. Your hands are a little bit tied.
Except that we didn't, how do you want to talk to them?
Yeah.
They've got, it's kind of like when you get a little more in the stadium, they just need to warn you. I don't think you're breaking the rules. It's out there. You need to get this thing.
No, I know. When you claim, call a claim manager out. You call a claim and have their head. Except for claim or whatever, so you pay out a pocket, Chris, whatever thing.
Well, that's, that's calling it a claim.
Yeah. Even if you don't.
I think we're working on it.
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 Maintenance, these are going to be structural precast panels at the abutments. And working with MoDOT, they are all concrete. They're going to be all via precast concrete, colored concrete. There is no actual clay brick material out there, if you recall. That was one of the directives we received from MoDOT. Very common process or design technique, more durable, less labor intensive in regards to installation, and very common. A lot of tilt-up structures use this method of construction, so. This landscape plan there at the east abutment of Lafayette Street, again, this will only be if that alternate gets picked up, so. Just in conclusion, the enhancements are, they are part of this larger MoDOT project that will be really increasing the traffic flow through the area, as well as access into downtown Jeff City, Lincoln University, Jeff City High, there at Lafayette, that will have a full service interchange, which it currently doesn't have right now. Project is scheduled for bidding in September. The base bid for the enhancements, approximately 1.4 million, and so if some of those alternates are picked up, that'll be, that'll be increased. Again, that will only be if the bids come in in a favorable environment or total for MoDOT, so. I will say it's been a great example of civic leadership and collaboration, again, to collaborate with MoDOT, the city and the county, and to do basically a concept design, get through all the collaboration, design, review, and discussion, into final design, really in six months, and secure the financing. It's pretty impressive. We don't normally see that in our world, so to be able to pull that off in a six-month timeframe is, is to be commended, so. We think it's going to be a great addition to Jeff City, a great opportunity, especially for downtown, the east end, Lincoln University, to take advantage of this, this investment from, from MoDOT, from the city and the county. And we think it'll be a nice, a great new entranceway gateway for the city of Jeff City. So, with that, that concludes the presentation.
All right, thanks Russ. Any questions from you guys? I've got one, real quick, just kind of hit me in seeing those slides up big as opposed to looking at them on small pieces of paper. If you go back to the three options for the alternates, that one, is it, is there, I don't recall a discussion about why we didn't put a pylon, pylons on the other side of the bridge as an alternate?
It was predominantly from a cost standpoint.
Okay. I knew we discussed it. It stands out more on this one than it does on the, you know, small pieces of paper we worked for so long.
Yeah, and if you recall, Mark, we had schemes where we did have it over on the, on the west end, and the thinking was putting on the east end because that will be the interchange that will receive the highest volume of traffic. And then since the west end is actually fairly close to the Jackson Street Bridge, we thought we kind of felt that, that captured that aesthetics there, so.
The east end is the center?
Yeah.
No, other way. East end is...
You're looking north.
You're going to have, the east end is going to have a pylon next to the bridges?
Right, as you're coming into town.
When you already got them up here. God, I would think it'd be opposite.
You're coming into town from the east side.
Coming in from the east side, so you see the pylons.
Oh, never mind. I'm thinking after you get past it, coming west.
And it's reversed the real directions.
Yeah.
The other thing, Mark, is the east, the east abutment is almost exactly equidistant between Chestnut and Jackson.
Okay.
From a standpoint of symmetry, you know.
It actually matches up pretty good.
It looks good.
So I only got one concern. The precast colored concrete of a red for those columns really concerns me because I haven't seen much in, in those deep, rich colors that even gets close to a natural face brick, and they tend to fade. The lighter colors are really good. The darker colors can have some potential problems, so I'm just curious on that.
Good point. I will say that, you know, early on, we did look at having more of a, you can do the precast, precast panels that do have a brick material veneer, and that was, like a bit of work, we were told by, by MoDOT, they really did not want that in order, so.
Due to the salt, the spray, the chemicals, and the fact that the brick would deteriorate very quickly in that scenario.
Yeah. It's a good point, Chris. I mean, a lot of it comes down to the specification and then your contractor. There are some very, very good flatboard precasters out there, and there are some not, but I mean, it's a good point. We obviously want what the red brick to mask architectural heritage of Jeff City, so again, that's in the specification and then in the insulation, so. And we will have the, as part of the construction process, there'll be required to do mockups of these, and we've had, we've had some good luck with those. I don't know if you recall some early presentations, we actually showed some cast-in-place walls with a form liner that used both the integral mix, which we're calling for here, as well as the stain, so that does help with that, give you a more rich color that helps with the UV fading.
Right, okay. All right, just, just concerned about it, because red tends to look pink very quickly.
It's a good point, it's a very good point, but the integral mix and then the stain and then you put sealant on it, we've had, we've had good luck. I mean, the best example that I can point to, although really it's, they have a clay brick veneer on it, is Busch Stadium. That's all tilt-up panels, precast panels, so it's doable, and we think in this case, you also have to keep in mind, the majority of folks viewing these structures are going to be going by at 40 or 50 miles an hour.
Sure.
And so we do think that, you know, with that right specification and the insurances during construction will meet that, that requirement, so.
Okay.
So as I understand it, we're going to try to get the initial designs to MoDOT today?
That's correct. They're, we are submitting signed and sealed documents to MoDOT today along with specifications. They will review these documents. I'm sure they'll have a few comments, and then it will go out to bid. These, these sheets, this project will be inserted into the larger bid document set of the MoDOT transportation project, so. Again, can't emphasize it enough, it really is impressive to pull all this off in six months, so a lot of folks, city, county, MoDOT really deserves some acknowledgement for that, to be able to pull that, all that off, so, and get it out to bid is an achievement.
And I want to recognize, we have some council members here, Carlos Graham, Bob Scrivener, Rick Prather, hopefully I didn't miss anybody, and thank you all for your support on this, and certainly you all are partners in this. If you have any questions or comments, I, I think Russ will, we will try to get on the agenda for a council meeting to have a similar presentation, but because the timeframe is very quick and very short, if you guys have any questions or comments, feel free to hop up on the floor. The only thing I ask is you grab a microphone so people, not in here can hear, but out there can actually hear what the question is.
It doesn't matter if you hear it or not.
Yes, Mr. Commissioner Ellinger.
Bob?
This is my first time, I think, to speak at this meeting.
We're pretty informal.
Don't know what the protocol is. We've been having discussions as late as this morning about the label on the bridge, whether it should be City of Jefferson or Jefferson City. So far, a majority of council people, informal text messaging, have indicated a preference for City of Jefferson, and there is a question in regard to the capital city, or, capital city of Missouri, what have you, and I know there's been some conversation even in these chambers this morning, sidebar on that, so I think we were told that we have just a little time at least to maybe make a change. I think, as presented, I think is what we're agreeing to do this morning. Is that what we've decided?
I'd like to give them something today, and then if we have to make a change on it, we might have a little bit of time. I know Mark's trying to finalize.
Well, and I think from our perspective, now, I mean, there's three of us, obviously, so I'm not speaking on behalf of three of you. We've had some informal conversations. You know, we, I think, like this language. We definitely like Jefferson City because, unless I'm mistaken, only in official documents is the City of Jefferson ever used. Everything else says Jefferson City, and when we welcome people into the community, we don't welcome them to, City of Jefferson, we welcome them to Jefferson City. I think it's analogous, although we don't say it as much here. It's Cole County, even though theoretically it's actually the county of Cole, you know. That's kind of why we liked this language. Now, I understand there's some disagreement about that.
There was some discussion on it. At this point, if we had to make a decision today, the council would say City of Jefferson.
Okay.
If we have a little bit more time, we could possibly change that, but the one thing that I'd like to see that we can on this is what it would look like, and I was talking to Russ earlier, that the longer you make the name, the smaller the letters are going to be, and it's, you know, and you can't, it's hard to tell what it's going to look like when you're coming in, because the shorter the name, the bigger the letters are going to be, so. Like I said, if it's today, it's going to be, and I think you had received an email from Steve Kroll, city administrator, and he had indicated that City Jefferson and, if possible, the Missouri State Capitol, or Missouri's capital city. I think that's too long. Again, again, that's one of those items we're struggling with because we don't know what the, how it's going to look coming, you know, on a drawing like this, to be able to really tell.
You know, I will say that, you know, we appreciate you all working with us on that. We know timing is important. This entire project has been fast-tracked, and we appreciate your all's agreeance to, to help us fast-track it. I will say that every design version that's been floated around, and there have been several of them that you all had sent to you, and they've all said Jefferson City. It's the first time City of Jefferson's ever been raised was yesterday, I think, in an email.
Yeah. Mark, I apologize if, if this kind of came to the discussion point among the council members early this morning, and I don't think there's been a chance for anyone to really express why City of Jefferson might be desirable. My initial reaction was, it ought to be City of Jefferson because that's the official name, but as I thought it through, and as late as 8:30 this morning, changed my mind that, and haven't had a chance to talk to other council members about my reasoning on it, so, but, you know, this is really, and we're enhancing this as part of effort to market Jefferson City, and as part of economic development, and if you look at Jefferson City Convention and Visitors Bureau, Jefferson City Chamber of Commerce, Jefferson City Parks and Recreation, we're pretty well-known as Jefferson City, and it's like I was speaking to Councilman Graham earlier, if someone said they had talked to Robert Scrivener this morning, probably a lot of people wouldn't know who you're talking about. I'm Bob Scrivener, and it's not that we wouldn't know who the City of Jefferson is, it's just that we're more familiably known as Jefferson City. So in my thinking, I would be one that would probably support Jefferson City over City of Jefferson, but as of right now, without having had a chance to have conversation with other council members about that, everyone's initial reaction was, well, we're officially City of Jefferson, and that's where, where the majority has come down. So if you give us a little bit of leeway to, to talk it through, we might very well be on board with Jefferson City as well.
Well, we got the email, and I just gave him my two cents. I think Jefferson City would be my preference, but I think we're going to defer to the city council and let you all decide. I'm, that's my opinion.
And we'll try to get that really quickly. I mean, this is something that we can get on the phone and talk about and have an informal agreement on it, and it's not, there's no contention at all. I mean, this has not been a contentious conversation. Everyone's wanting to do, this was most people's initial reaction to it.
Russ, if it's possible, can you just mock, I don't know how easy it is to mock up one of, it looks like this, except for it says City of Jefferson, Missouri's capital city?
Yeah.
And that way, we can at least see what it looks like?
Yeah, we can do, what do you, City of Jefferson, Missouri's capital city, or Jefferson City?
Yeah, I kind of like the Missouri's. I'll be honest, I kind of like Missouri's capital city. I do kind of actually like that, even though it's a little longer. I do prefer Jefferson City, though, so.
Yeah, until we can do that, you know, we, we got others, what we have, you know, I think it's that way they will surprise, I think it's up to, so. We can quickly pull all that together, and I guess we'll send it tomorrow.
Yeah, we'll circulate it to, we'll get it to the mayor and to city administrator, and hopefully that'll, they will disseminate it to everyone on the council. I don't think I have all the council members' email addresses.
As soon as we get the chance, we'll get on the horn and start having some face-to-face conversations instead of, or not face-to-face, but phone-to-phone rather than text conversations.
We'll through Steve, too. And I, we should be able to get those to you by tomorrow.
That'd be great.
And then, I will say again, we'll have to, I think, we would have to notify MoDOT that this discussion is occurring. I do think we have a little bit of time perhaps that we can make that change with them, but again, can't guarantee that because the bottom plans aren't going in today.
Sure.
They're going in the next couple days.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, as far as schedule goes, technically, the, you know, the advertising for bidding is, is in early August, so what's going in today is a review set for MoDOT, so there is a little bit of time if you do make a change.
And these are definitely non-substantive construction changes, so.
I don't, yeah, it's not like this is impacting public safety, health, or welfare. It's, it's important from the overall identity, so. They are, again, aluminum letters that are embedded into the concrete barrier, and so again, I think we might have a little bit of flexibility there with MoDOT, so.
Okay.
Thanks for giving us a chance to comment.
Well, thank you all for coming up. We very much appreciate it. We look forward to continuing our working relationship, and thank you all very much, and I hate to give you the bad news, which is pretty soon we're going to need a check. All right, anything else for Russ? Going once, going twice? All right, thank you very much, Russ. We really appreciate everything you've done for us. While Russ takes down his equipment, Ed, you want to do a quick update for us, and then we'll go to the other set of architects in the room?
Yeah, I'll, brief is okay?
Yes, brief is very good. Preferred. If you wouldn't mind just using a microphone, that, that way people that are watching can hear what's said.
For folks that don't know me, my name is Ed Sigmund. I'm the director of the Regional
Planning Commission, and we represent local governments in the six-county region. Our membership ranges from 44 to 46 local governments that we help. I prepared some notes for you all, and I, of our recent activities in Cole County. So if you go to page two, I'll just get right to the point, some things that we're, have been doing or will be doing in Cole County. This spring, we will start again on the update of your hazard mitigation plan, and this is the document that I'm displaying in front of you here. It's the Cole County Jefferson City Hazard Mitigation Plan, and it's a, we update this plan every five years at no cost to the local governments. And added note, for our Howard County plan and Montauk County plans, we receive state planning awards for our planning documents that we prepared. So as we went through the process, we got a little bit better at it, and it's, as you take a look at it, it's a quality document. We anticipate this year to be helping Russellville with their wastewater project, to prepare a grant application to secure some funds to help with their funding for their wastewater improvements. We also just finished an application with St. Thomas for a demolition project to tear down three houses in, in St. Thomas, and we're awaiting word whether or not that application will be approved. We helped St. Martin's a few months ago with a recreation, recreational trails grant. Doug did the legwork on it, but we did the environmental report so that application could move forward. And then I've listed, as you can see, these projects are all from 2011 on up, ranging from St. Thomas Wastewater, where over $700,000 in grant funds were obtained, to the Russellville Brownfields Project, where $250,000 were obtained in grant funds. Those were the same, some of the things that we've been involved with in Cole County. So again, we appreciate you all, you all's participation with us. Be glad to answer any questions.
Gentlemen, questions?
Nope. Browsing through these things.
It's good to get the reports. Nice to get an update once in a while. You guys do good work up there, and I think you guys have always been a valuable partner over the years. Elevator project aside.
Which was not at all your all's fault, so I don't want to get in that, may I? As a member of the tack committee, I want to commend the staff up there. They do a good job of order, so we're good to work with.
Chris?
Then the only other issue is, we did get the dues invoiced. Are we okay to go ahead and process for payment?
I'm good.
Make a motion.
Second?
Or we just got to put that in council.
All those favors, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those motion carries.
Thank you.
That'll solve that problem.
Like one, St. Martin's and Wardsville and St. Paul's, do they come to you all, or have you all gone out and visited them, their city councils, and told them that you all, what you can do?
More so they come to us, and we probably need to do a little bit better job of...
I was just going to recommend, if nothing else, you know, a nice letter saying, hey, we're out here, you know, there's, obviously, a lot of them are getting assistance, so we know you're available, but.
Lomont House and Wardsville, I know this.
Those small communities have very limited funds, and if they're available, have grants and funds available, and that's good for them to access it, so.
And that's one of our, what we're supposed to do, so.
It's really been good that, you know, St. Martin's has hired that part-time administrator, frees up somebody to come to those meetings, and I think they're getting some benefit out of it, but it's hard for a lot of those smaller communities that just have volunteers to, to get to those meetings, so, anyway, but.
Great.
Great, thanks, Ed.
Thanks, Ed. We appreciate everything. Please thank the staff up there, too. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is facility expansion presentation. Carrie?
Two to three minute here, too.
And again, I, and again, I'd ask, just, just for folks that are watching, if you would use the microphone. It doesn't, there are no speakers in the room, but it does transmit out to the, the folks that are watching us. Oh, you need me to turn that on? I'm waiting for it to warm up, I hope. Is it, is it on, Debbie?
Yeah.
I heard it beep.
Who shut it off?
I did, because I thought we were done. Nobody told me we were going to a second power point.
That scares me.
If you want to get started, Carrie, here in a second, we'll have power.
Okay. Thanks. Again, I'm Carrie Gamp with the Architects Alliance, and this is a progress report, or schematic design report, for the Cole County Courthouse Edition project. Been talking primarily architectural to this point. Today, we have with us all disciplines that will be associated with it, including CMPS, Central Missouri Professional Services. Paul Sampson is here to talk about civil. Paul, you don't raise your hand. Dave Weber with Allstate Consultants to talk about structural. Dana Tenel with Tenel and Associates to talk about mechanical, electrical plumbing. We'll be pretty brief. Do the commissioners have a copy of what we're submitting today?
Yes.
Okay. We'll very quickly go through the narratives, a summary of each discipline. We have some summary drawings, cost estimate, and schedule for the project. Beginning with architectural, again, the, the project, the, again, the project intends to, it's a combination of renovation of existing and new construction. The existing Sallyport and inmate holding will remain, and then new spaces would include office space, jury deliberation, courtroom space, additional courthouse restrooms, convenience stair, that sort of thing. Starting with the ground floor, new space on the alley level would be about 1,200 square foot of office space. Second floor and third floor are each 4,500 square feet, with the second floor being jury deliberation and office, the third floor being courtroom and judges' chambers. There's an optional fourth floor that would also be a 4,500 square foot floor plan. During the, the construction and afterward, the secure perimeter of the courthouse is expected to remain the same. The only modification would be that that secure perimeter would expand into the new areas on the second, third, and optional fourth floors. On the second floor would be a new secure vestibule, opening onto the west lawn. The ADA accessible ramp would originate very near the existing west door that serves as the main entrance to the courthouse, so people would still arrive at the same point to the courthouse to access an ADA ramp into the new secure vestibule, which would be north.
It's a pointer, if you want to use it.
You want me to point you?
Just so people can see what we're talking about.
Okay. Here's the, here's the footprint of the existing courthouse. Here's the footprint of a typical floor. This is the main entrance to the courthouse now. This is an ADA ramp that protects a sidewalk and stair. There's the new secure vestibule. The built, the site is bound on the north by the alley, the courthouse on the south, east, the parking lot here, and west, the sidewalk here. There is still expansion capability vertically, and there's also expansion capability eastward, although it would be more cost and would impact the parking out here. Even if we were to build out and over the parking, which we don't recommend for security reasons, you would lose parking simply for dropping columns down in there. It's a very tight parking lot. The existing courthouse is a combination of two colors of masonry, a gray and a tan, the base being a rusticated tan, and the gray above being both smooth and rusticated, so that gives us a lot to pull from to tie this in aesthetically with the courthouse. Again, two colors and two textures, tan and gray and smooth and rough. So that gives us a lot of options to make the, the new construction complimentary. We do anticipate load-bearing masonry around the perimeter with a masonry veneer. We're still working on those. This is, again, a schematic design report, is about 15% through the, the design process, so it's still somewhat preliminary, but we have a lot more detail now from all the other disciplines, including cost. So some of us are more than 15% complete, some of us are less, but cumulatively, we're about 15% through, with a lot more information, like I said, from the disciplines. The windows on the courthouse, they're, they are very large windows. Putting them on a building addition looks a little funny, so we're planning to mimic the geometry of the windows, but they will be a smaller scale to tie in with the scale of the building addition. But by and large, the, the building addition is planned to be compatible with the existing structure, although the courthouse will remain dominant piece of architecture on the site. I've kind of talked in meetings prior on architectural, so I'm going to fast-forward a little bit to civil engineering. If you go back one slide, we do have a civil survey that's been completed by Central Missouri Professional Services, and this is that document. Also currently underway, which we're going to get to in a minute on structural, the geotechnical investigations. Borings were just completed yesterday, and we have some preliminary information on that, which by and large is good news, the information we're getting, but we just got that information verbally yesterday from Bruce Dawson. Paul, can you summarize the, the civil site issues?
Yes, they both work. Thanks, Carrie. Basically, what you're looking at now is a copy of the existing topographic survey, showing the existing jail and sheriff's residence on the right-hand side of the page. Again, as Carrie said generally, we're butting the alley to the north, parking lot to the east, and Monroe Street and sidewalk to the west. The, the new structure will be immediately adjacent north of the existing courthouse. The site work is, is going to be fairly minimal. Again, the majority of the footprint's going to be sitting on top of the existing Sallyport and inmate holding area. There'll be some excavation that'll be required on the west side. There'll be some excavation that'll be required on the west side of the new structure where the new basement office addition is gonna be. Then the sidewalk coming from the main entrance, the existing entrance up to the new secure vestibule, and then the ramp. That's really the majority of the site work. The utilities, we've had some discussions with the mechanical engineer, and there'll be a new electric service that comes into the site. That'll come off the existing utility infrastructure that's in the alley. All the existing utilities are expected to remain as they are, being fed through the new, or through the existing courthouse. During the survey that we did, we noticed quite a bit of deterioration of some of the existing sidewalks and landscaping and infrastructure around the building. That's something that, as we start getting into the more detailed design and looking at more detailed budgets, that we may look at, seeing how far you guys want to go as far as repairing some of the existing facilities that are around the courthouse, and making sure that the new infrastructure ties in well with what's there. We did look at the demolition a little bit, and there's some cost estimates in the package on the building demo. Underground storage tank for the existing generator will have to be removed, and we've got some budgetary numbers plugged in for that as well.
Thanks Paul. We've been pretty careful about paying attention to the scope of the project, in other words, what's required for this building addition to the courthouse. Other things that we see or identify, such as sidewalks, other... Other areas of the site. We'll identify those and talk to you later about if you want to include that in the project, or as a possible bid alternate, and that... Things like that spill in even from mechanical and electrical. There may be some things that we find that need to be part of a long-range plan that may or may not be part of this project. You done?
I'm done.
Dave, can you talk, summarize the structural?
Sure. One thing, an easy way for me to look at the project structurally is, from the second floor up, this is a new building, okay? Second floor of the courthouse up, this is a new building. From the second floor down, there's a four-foot gap between the second floor of the courthouse and the lid on inmate holding and Sallyport. So that's where we accommodate the bearing, or you're gonna hear Dave use the word ring beam, this concrete donut sits there, and then transitions down to existing foundation walls and footings from there down, okay?
So, pretty much in a nutshell, like Kerry said, I think the last thing I want to talk about is the issue with the existing foundation, because I can be close to the door, and if I need to run out, I can do that. But, but the easy parts are this, we have this existing roughly 20-inch plain concrete wall, and we're, you know, our constraint is, we're keeping this lower level intact, right? And so, we're gonna come on top of that with a collar beam or a ring beam to distribute this new load evenly, because the existing system, where these openings currently are in the existing system, the heads or the support for the upper levels currently are basically the spandrel are turned down of the floor system. And so, that's not very deep and resilient, so we really need this, this concrete beam, if you will, to distribute the load around the perimeter of the existing foundation, and that serves a lot of purposes, mainly to try to help use the existing foundation without retrofit.
Just to orient you, this is the second floor of the courthouse, I refer to it as the same level as the second floor of the courthouse. From here up, it's new construction. This light area here, that's inmate holding, that's vehicular Sallyport. This will be a new basement to the west for offices, this is office space, courtroom above, convenience stair, jury deliberation, and judges' chambers. So this is standing in the alley, heading section through the building, looking south.
Yeah, just to tell you, why is this changing directions? It amazingly lines up with our stair elevator tower, and we want to have a parallel condition there, so that we can sort of not add to the load and not mess with that foundation at the elevator pit and what's going on there, because in my opinion, we don't, we're gonna get, go back and see what drawings we have for that connector, but we're not very confident that we know what's going on there, and so we'd like to just stay off of it and not add a bunch of additional load. And so, that change in direction causes us to have a transfer system, and so that's why it looks like that, because we're staying off this existing elevator area. So this is very common, like schools or office buildings, you have steel frame, concrete floor system. I would say that the thing that's not common is where our 0 to 100 is with this existing foundation system, and I'm just gonna, just throw it out there to you. When you have an existing foundation system and you add new and modern today, today code loads and systems on there, it gives me a lot of concern. So what I did was, before I do the calculations to determine definitively what the issues are, I know that we probably have to modify this foundation at a few discrete locations at a minimum, and that's what our costs are for. But I know that if we find that the existing foundation system is not adequate to support our new loads, you could have to retrofit it. And so, that big number, that retrofit number, is to do a micropile retrofit to strengthen the existing foundation. I think preliminarily, without doing all the numbers, I think that it's very likely that we're right on the knife edge if we have the fourth floor, future floor. We're probably good if we don't consider that roof a future fourth floor, but I need to do the numbers to definitively determine that. And so, there's kind of really three scenarios. It works and we have the discrete retrofits that are not extremely expensive. It works without the future fourth floor, or it may not work and we have to retrofit it. And that's a big number, and you saw that number, and that's why I'm kind of inching toward the door, but it is what it is, guys, you have this existing structure, and we have to deal with that. And so, there's two parts to that. I have to give the geotechnical engineer my information after I do the calculations to say, what was the previous load, what is our new load? And then, the geotechnical engineer can take that and say, our existing conditions can handle it or not. So that's where we are right now. So I'm sure, I tried to say enough to maybe answer a few questions, but...
Did, as I told you in the last meeting, geotechnical report is underway, they just did the borings yesterday. Rock was anywhere from 20 feet down to the east, and 10 to 12 feet to the west, which was good news. In other words, if we have to go down to something, it's close. The worst-case scenario that Dave had put in the cost estimate assumed that we were having to go farther to rock. So Bruce Dawson gave an indication, he still felt that a spread footing system versus a micropile system was still very much a possibility for this project, but again, that was his, literally, he didn't even have the information, that was after talking to the guys in the field about what they were coming up with.
And on the way down, I did talk to the geotechnical engineer, and he iterated that. I assumed 25 feet to rock for these numbers, and those micropiles are on a per-foot basis, so it matters on that cost if we have a profile of five feet to 20 feet versus 25 everywhere, that does matter, but it doesn't change the overall shock factor of the number. Him saying that we don't have bad soils is a very good sign, but in a nutshell, it lowers that number by, say, 20%, but it doesn't...
A big number.
Yeah, but it doesn't change the fact that you still have the other 80% of the...
Assuming it's necessary.
And you gotta realize, I'm presenting this because I'm giving you the continuum. The reality is, is usually you're somewhere in the middle of that continuum, and we're gonna know that quickly.
That answer will also be included in our next phase, we call it design development, that answer will be in there.
It seems like that's, I mean, I'm gonna put the cart before the horse here, that seems like that's a pretty important thing to know before we get too far down the road. It changes the numbers pretty dramatically.
Certainly, it's my top priority, and I expect to have what I need to get the geotechnical engineer within a week. And then, he's gonna react to that, and we'll be able to make that final, what do we really have to do decision that affects the cost, so...
Thank you, Dave.
Thanks, Dave. Dana, can you talk about any...
Certainly. Dana Tenel with Tenel and Associates. Our firm is gonna be involved in doing the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and fire protection for the project. Plumbing-wise, very simple systems, though everything is gonna be confined within the structure itself. The existing water, sanitary sewer, and everything that's in the building will be looked at and reused as required if we need to... The size and everything is fine, but if we need to look at a new sanitary line out to the, to the street, we have no issues getting it out there. And the concern is that you have a 40 or 50-year-old system, and we don't want that to be the weakest link in that design. We've enhanced the toilet rooms for this facility, increasing over the code required for making up for what's happening in the existing courtroom. All of those will be energy-efficient flush valves and faucets for the, for all of the plumbing fixtures there. The storm drainage from the roof will be taken down through the building and taken directly to the storm sewers onsite. The fire protection portion of it, in looking at the overall square footage and size of the building, this building is not large enough to require by code a fire protection system, wet sprinkler system. If the commissioners opt for that, the water mains in the street are sufficient of size to be brought in and provided for a sprinkler system in the building. The HVAC system, we are looking at totally independent system for this structure, and have looked at a couple of options, one being a very efficient, very quiet variable refrigerant flow system. It's very energy-efficient, it doesn't require a lot of ductwork, you have ductwork that's basically for the fresh air component of the code, and there's a small individual duct systems for the various areas, for the offices, for the courtrooms, all of those that will provide the air distribution and maintain the comfort, you know, for the staff and judges. We feel very comfortable with that, with that system here. The other systems that we've looked at would be a VAV system, where it has a lot of ductwork, and still gives the individual zone control and thermostatic control for the individual offices and courtrooms as the VRF system, but there's a little more ductwork, and we want to keep the ceilings to a maximum height for the courtrooms and those areas, so, you know, we're looking for as many options as possible. Nothing is fixed in stone at this point, so we're just kind of looking at those options at this point. Our electrical system, as Kerry had indicated, we're gonna bring in a new electrical system for, you know, for the building, you know, that'll be strictly for this vertical element, and providing, you know, light fixtures and power as required, data, and telephone, all of those systems, and work with the existing courtroom and its phone systems and whatnot to make sure that that's all compatible between the two. The service, UE, AmeriUE, indicates that there's no issues in bringing service to the, you know, to the building. Currently has a separate service now, that's not of sufficient size. And the age of the equipment, it would be such that we would, you know, have to replace it anyway, so we would bring in a new electric service, you know, for this facility. There'll be some transition time during construction, but for the most part, it'll be seamless in terms of electrical distribution.
Thank you very much.
Thanks Dana. Just wrapping up the drawings again, this is the alley level, this is that additional 1,200 square feet of space available. There is a communicating stair as an option there with the floor above if you want. This level could also have its own exterior entrance on this north, east, let's see, what is that, northwest corner, if you wanted to. Again, here's the existing Sallyport, existing inmate holding. Next floor up, office space, jury deliberation, new public restrooms, convenience stair, and secure vestibule to handle in and out of the courtroom, out of the courthouse.
And that's all on at grade with the floor, correct?
That's correct. There are, all of this square footage, all of this square footage, there are no steps. This is the third floor. Again, you see the courtroom layout, we have met with judiciary staff. We do have a couple of options for this layout that we're working on that they will need to review. We've gone and looked at some other sample courtrooms, large and small, to really just to hear what they're looking for in a courtroom, but we have all the pieces and parts in there, the judge's bench, the reporter, the clerk, witness, attorney's tables, not only two, but a third table, and then gallery space and jury. So you'll see some more options of that being flushed out with the judiciary staff. This is simply the roof plan or future floor. This is a rough sketch we're working on, we'll have this more rendered in the next submittal. Building section, again, you can see the existing areas to remain off the alley. You see the new construction, you also, you've heard me use the word convenience stair, that's because we decided in working with you that that stair stops at the second floor and exits out the secure vestibule, or wherever you decide to exit, versus continuing down through inmate holding and on to the alley. That was an option, we really didn't see a functional benefit, and we saw a security, added security risk to doing that. So when I use the word convenience stair, it's because it's helping people in this end of the building get down and out to the secure vestibule versus delivering them outside the building, which would be an egress stair.
It's like the stairs currently in the courthouse.
Yes, sir. Again, we're improving, you know, there's lots of code issues when you have a historic building, so we are improving the conditions that are there. Next, again, this is the section you can see with inmate holding, Sallyport. Again, there's that convenience stair, rather than run it down and out to the alley, it comes down and goes over to the secure vestibule and out, or whatever. There's lots of ways you can operate that stair from a building management standpoint. You can lock it off and use it for backup house, jury movement, judges' movement, lawyer movement, law enforcement movement, or you can let the public use it, kind of as you see fit. Next, looking at a summary of cost breakdowns, here's the big one. This is a summary, and we started on the top floor. So when you see third floor, and you see the paragraph under it, floor structure, wall structure, roof and floor structure, masonry, windows, roofing, interiors, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and fire protection, remember, fire protection is an option. We have individual numbers for all of those if you want to get into the weeds, and the folks that stood up and spoke today all contributed to those numbers. So that's a significant amount of more detail than we had at the last meeting when it was just a cost per square foot. Second floor, and that floor is coming out at 765,000. Second floor, again, floor structure, wall structure, masonry, windows, interiors, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and fire protection. That would be the approximate cost of a finished fourth floor, okay? Because we already have the roof handled in the third floor. So there's your rough number for that. Now, you could also do a shell, you know, or something like that, but the other thing that could impact that number is what Dave Weber referred to, if that starts tipping the scale of the footing capacity. I do want to mention one thing about this new construction, we are still lightening the building significantly, okay? The building that's there is very, very high, so we are still lightening the building with what we're doing today, but we're also applying modern codes to it, okay? Next is the new first floor basement, that's the area to the west, the 1,200 square feet. So there, you would have some building excavation, footings, foundations, floor structure, wall structure, interiors, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, fire protection, windows, and an exterior finish, which would be a finish on a concrete wall. $142,000, and then... And then existing first-floor basement, that is inmate holding and sally port, and those numbers are primarily, Dave has already made us an assumption of some wall and footing modifications. So we have some in there. We don't have the worst-case scenario, which we'll have that in a matter of days, whether, what part of that would be required, if any. We do have the ring beam in there, exterior finishes, and there is an HVAC unit currently today that's dedicated to that area, and I think this includes a new HVAC unit for that area. So that's the reason that you're seeing $102,000, not necessarily for major interior renovation. It's more retrofitting to allow the stuff upstairs to happen. Then under site work, we've identified everything we could think of and then some, but you have selective building demolition. That's a big deal. It's not a wrecking ball. It's very selective demolition, going in there and taking that down. So that number alone of that 383 is about $140,000. We've talked to a, CNPS has talked to a demolition contractor about how you disassemble a building and reuse parts of it. So that's the number that's in there for selective demolition. We have money in there for fuel tank removal. We've got a cost in to remove the buried fuel tank. You'll see down later, we have another cost if we had an environmental hazard there of a plume or something like that where fuel has traveled over the years. But we have just typical removal and, you know, some small contamination in the number of the 383. Other than that, we have new sidewalk stairs, ramps, landscaping and benches, and an allowance for exterior signage, some sidewalk repairs that, again, CNPS noticed. They're in the number now. You don't necessarily have to do that right now.
Kerry, while you're on the sidewalks, I'll stop you for a second. You mentioned something about the sidewalks a while ago and including that. So you do have it included in the big number, or?
Yes.
That would be in addition to?
We have it included. I'm pointing it out because we don't really have to fix damaged sidewalks outside the project area.
Okay. But it is included?
It is included.
Okay. Because that's what I'm looking at, the bottom number, worst-case scenario, how hard are we going to?
Yeah.
Get hit? Okay, go ahead. Thanks.
Sure. Mechanical equipment, temporary relocation, we put that under site work. That's about $60,000. And then footing modifications. So again, we have some anticipated footing modifications, but we're waiting for details to see if we need to put more money in there from Bruce Dawson. So that brings, the building cost really hasn't changed. It's about $2 million. By the time you add in soft costs of contingency, site survey, geotechnical investigations, and architecture and engineering services, you're at about $2.4 million, $2.3. Again, we still have a pretty hefty contingency in there. I would expect that to continue to drop, and we've tried to be conservative with all these numbers, so we don't have any surprises. The only thing that, at this point, that remains sort of an unforeseen potential would be asbestos remediation. When we did the sally port, there was not a lot of asbestos found. The building is of such an age that if there were asbestos in there, it would have been added after the building was built. In other words, it's historic enough that it wasn't in the original construction, okay? So it would have had to been added later. I think what we really found in the sally port was lead paint versus any asbestos of any merit. Footing micro piles, this was, again, we were developing these numbers over the last few weeks. This was the worst-case scenario, which, that's the phone call we made yesterday, and Bruce Dawson has backed off that as a possibility. So we know it's not going to be that number. It's going to be less, and we don't know how much of that number it'll take.
Potentially, it's none, right?
Yes. That's what Bruce said, it remains to be an option to do spread footing option. That's what he meant.
Is not having to do this.
This is a micro pile system.
Kerry, if you don't mind, it's worth talking about. I love karaoke, so I'm going to do this. I just did some numbers because I love calculating numbers, but I look back in my detailed cost estimates, and if I assume 25 feet to rock, Bruce basically told us, we know we have an average of about 1,200 feet to rock. That's half of a part of that number. That number that's 350 would be less $125,000 right off the bat, if it's even necessary. So I can tell you that definitively right now.
Thank you.
Look at that, we just saved $125,000.
Every day you give us the, you know, it gets a little bit better, so.
Yeah, but I like to prepare for the worst. So I like to prepare for the worst, though, so it scares, and then we can back off of it, that's fine.
What is, I'm confused at what Bruce is talking about, a spread footing under an existing structure?
Yo, can you explain the difference between a micro pile versus augmenting an existing spread footing?
I can, but I have to get this microphone real quick.
So a spread footing is what you traditionally have when you dig out for a house, and that's a shallow footing that bears on soil, that we have a bearing capacity. And when I say a micro pile, the reason why is, is the new portion of the structure, we could do a drilled pier to rock. The micro piles, what they are is, they have mini rigs that do a smaller pile that can go right next to an existing structure and then tie to it to support it. So it's kind of like a really nice version of like what Helotech does, except it's actually a sacrificial head that drills into rock, and then it has a little trimming tube that fills it full of concrete. And so it's a miniature drilled pier, basically.
Right. Okay, but I want to know about the spread footing that would go under the existing structure.
Okay. The reason why we have that, if you go back to the, just any overall layout that shows a stairwell in there, perfect, maybe one that, okay, yeah. So when we changed directions of this framing here to accommodate leaving this alone, if you will, we're going to induce these concentrated loads on the existing wall structure, and I anticipate that those three locations that that happens, we're going to have to retrofit this existing shallow footing system. And so that's what we're talking about. We'll have to dig partially underneath that and strengthen it or make it bigger so that it can support these additional loads at those discrete locations.
We're assuming we have to do that.
Oh, I think that's a slam dunk.
Yeah.
It's in the.
We're saying we're definitely doing that.
And how are you going to do that without disrupting the sally port and jail holding and all that stuff?
We talked, there's a little bit of that verbiage in here. We talked about the way we currently have, so we have minimal amount of work happening inside, but there will be a few times they have access inside. But the goal is to keep the inmate holding and sally port completely functional during this project. The micro pile would be more invasive, and it would be every 12 to 16 feet of line of wall. So that would be.
Even interior?
Yeah. What we would do and what we've done in the past is stagger those so you don't get this eccentric load on there. And so for these three discrete locations, you know, we're going to have to partially get in. And what I'm talking about is, you'd have to put orange fence around a three-foot by three-foot area that we get into on the inside for a period of time, short period of time. So it's not shutting anything down. It's an inconvenience certainly for a short period of time.
How long a short period of time?
Well, it depends on how hard they work, but maybe a week at each location or something like that.
Thank you. Last item under potential unforeseen conditions is fuel tank contamination remediation. Again, we have removal of the fuel tank in the area immediately around it. If I go back a lot of years, I worked in another large city and dealt with fuel tanks that contamination had spread completely under the street to the other side of the block. I can't imagine that's here, but we put a number in there for more remediation if we would uncover that during excavation. The last page is a schedule. We're currently in the, at the end of sort of the Phase 1 feasibility. Site survey is complete in June. Geotechnical report is during the month of July. So boring to Doug yesterday, we got the preliminary information yesterday. We'll have that report in July. Design development is scheduled for the remainder of July into the beginning of August. So we'll be here at the beginning of next month with a similar report. Construction documents are slated for August, September, and into the 1st of October, with competitive bidding to occur in October. And that would give you construction able to commence in November and two, four, six, eight, 10, 11. I don't know that it'll really take 11 months, but we've got a healthy schedule in there. If anything, we can reduce that in 11 months. But again, we have selective demolition. We're not tearing the building down. It's taking certain pieces of it apart, piece by piece. And then you would have a period of time for owner mobilization. I did forget to mention that we are taking select portions of the masonry off the existing sheriff's residence and reapplying that onto the facade of the new entry, the new secure vestibule. That was on the sketch, and we continue working on that.
What's going to happen with the rest of it? The rest of the stone block? We're going to have a rummage sale or?
You can, I mean, if you don't do anything with it, then the contractor will include the value of that in their bid.
Because there's definitely going to be some value there. That's what I was curious about. And I saw in the picture that you do have some of that sheriff's house being used there. I like that, integrating that in there. I think that's a good idea. And using as much of it as we can anywhere. You said something about putting, maybe using it for park benches or something to set out there, too?
Yeah, the landscaping, the park benches. You know, we've even talked about, we actually are working with some masonry suppliers now to find compatible, new materials compatible with the historic courthouse, but we've even talked about taking some of that existing stonework and using some banding courses, integrating it in with the new, but there's nothing that will be detailed yet.
Well, and that block ramp?
Yes.
That can all be from existing stone, too.
That's correct.
So lots of ways to incorporate some of those materials. Okay. Anything else, Kerry?
We'll open it to questions.
Gentlemen.
Do we have any kind of allowance in here for FFNE? Is it for, say, the courtroom? Is that going to be a courtroom that's finished and then we bring computers in and chairs and?
No. We're considering, Jeff, things that are bolted down as in the project. For example, this desk you're sitting at, or the judge's bench, or where the audience sits, that's all bolted down. You don't want things people can pick up and throw in the courtroom, so that's all included. The judges have mentioned some technology that they're considering for the room. We understand that is not being run through the general contractor, and frankly, they're not even sure what the technology they want the room to have.
And there, I will say that I've had a discussion with the judges, and they will be paying for that additional technology. We will not be paying for that.
Like the jury room, cabinets?
That's all of them.
Tables?
A table and chairs, if it's not bolted down, we would have to provide.
Well, I just, we would need to include that into total cost, which, that's separate from yours, and that's fine, but we need to have.
The problem with that is, and Kerry and I actually had a little discussion about it, is that's pretty far down the line knowing what it is. For example, there's office space on the first floor that is probably more office space than we need right now. Why would we, I mean, do we want to factor in how much it costs to buy desks for office space we're not going to use currently, but it's for future expansion?
Once we build that office, you're going to have people speak in for them. So I'd consider having it in there, worst-case scenario, kind of like we did with the micro piles.
And Jeff, the way to put a number to that would be, take a look at what you have. You're not hiring initially a lot of new people, so they theoretically have a desk now.
That's not your part, then. That's separate.
They do have to have a desk now.
That's fine.
Same with the jury deliberation. Do we want new, or do you want to take the jury deliberation tables that you have?
Well, the one room has to stay as a jury deliberation room. We're using a temporary jury deliberation room now, which we could move that up. But yeah, I mean, there's going to be some FFNE.
Right.
It's a lot less than, I mean, we're not putting in TVs and washers and dryers and refrigerators and things like that. That's later discussion.
But it does add up pretty quick.
Some of which is very meritorious in certain facilities.
When you're talking about the jury room, and we need to set it up so it's a multipurpose room. Obviously, when we have a jury going, that's a specific use, but I think it's a good idea to be able to use it for other things, like we're currently doing with the other room that we got set up, so.
Yeah, and Jeff, that has a door, and you can take this, the jury from a secure standpoint behind the scenes, or you can lock that door off and let people use it from the main public corridor. Again, that's a building management issue.
That's a fairly nice-sized room.
Yeah.
Parking during construction, how much of that is going to be taken up? Because when we were doing the brick and stuff or the stone on the courthouse, we used up a few spots, and it was an inconvenience, so we just got to be ready for that.
Well, I would never say that this is not going to be an inconvenience. It will be a pain in the butt for 10 months. Something that depends on the contractor, too. We're going to have to work out a lay-down plan for their materials and things like that. They'll certainly use the west lawn from the center.
Are you seeing that whole parking lot behind there? It's basically going to be?
That's small, the small parking lot?
If it's available, they would love to have it.
It'll be available.
And then everything probably up against the old jail, they're going to probably need to use. I wouldn't want to park there if they're working there.
Are you talking about east? I don't think they'll take all of that.
No, he's talking about the three spots and four spots that actually touch the jail.
Oh, okay.
So what we're going to lose, give or take 12 or 14 spots for 10 months, short period of time.
What about access to the sally port? Will you be able to get a vehicle in and out of there?
That's our goal, is to keep vehicular access to the existing sally port. Now, it may have to be, you know, it's no different than a building downtown that gets a new facade. You have to build a cattle chute to get to it. But the idea is that, that's why we were working so closely with Dave on this micro pile situation. The idea is that, you know, the lid is intact, the outer walls are all intact, so you should be able to use that inmate holding. Now, there will be some interruptions.
Oh, I have no doubt, as long as, and like I said, we worked well with you, so I'm not that concerned, but if we could just be part of that schedule so we know, can expect what's going on.
Now, there's actually a paragraph in there that all interruptions would have to be coordinated with the owner, law enforcement, and courthouse security personnel.
The other thing I was going to ask about was that you're taking out the old tank for the generator? Are we putting a new one in, or are we not going to have a generator for the courthouse?
Right now, we don't have a new generator put in. The existing generator won't drive the need today, is my understanding.
It generates, you know, it's got the red plugs. The current generator of generators runs the red plugs, that's it.
And that's okay, but the only thing I'm bringing up is because, I'm being selfish, because of Dale being in there, those servers got to keep going. If they're taking the gas tank out, where is the generator going to get fuel from?
Something to put on our transition planning list. I don't know how many gallons that generator burns, runs, uses per hour, the existing one. I just don't know what it takes. I mean, if we're all, if it's something we're only concerned about making sure the computers run, the facility itself doesn't really need to run 24/7. Only the computers have to run 24/7.
Put that load on there? I want to.
I wouldn't think that would be an enormous amount of load, mostly server technology now as opposed to mainframe technology.
Well, it could run our office plus the whole jail, I wanted to say, for five days with a full fuel load whenever we were over there. But I don't know if that was ever, if that was ever actually.
You know that we got natural gas pipe to the building. We could always put in a small natural gas generator, which takes up very little space, which is more than enough power to run a computer system.
And if you have, I mean, you don't need as big as fuel tank in there if you're, because if you're not drawing as much power, then you're not going to need to, you know, the generator's not going to burn that much, so.
Something we definitely at least explore.
Yeah, we understand what the load, Dana will give you options for that.
Chris? I think this is a good plan. My concern is that I can't vote for this until we have enough space in this to get out of the Carnegie Building. If we don't get everybody out of the Carnegie Building, I can't push this forward because this is a $2.4 million courtroom. I mean, that's just, that's just plain and simple. So until we can get everybody out of that Carnegie Building and get rid of it, I can't make this go forward. So if that's the 4,000 square foot on the fourth floor or whatever it is, but that was one of our goals, was to get out of the Carnegie Building. And if the courts need a new courtroom, that's, that's fine. We're accomplishing that, too, but.
We can move the space that's available in here, as I recall from the floor planning. We can move the public defender out and into this extra office space.
We can move the public defender out and into this extra office space. It actually leaves space available in the building, not a lot, but some. So it gets the public defender out. That leaves solely and exclusively the assessor. Which, you know, we've discussed the option, which is fairly easy, of moving the prosecutor into the shell space in the jail and then putting the assessor on the fourth floor of this building. Obviously, those are independent elected officials. We may have some issues there. But I think that, that was the goal of the long-term project, was to, I agree with you, was to get us out of the Carnegie Building. My, my kinda thought and process on this was, this was kinda step one of getting this out. It wasn't, we weren't doing it all in one step. It was part of the process of getting this out. And providing for the long-term court expansion too.
Sure.
You know, it solves, it's kind of an opportunity to get a facility project that kills all the, all the birds with one.
Well, I mean, you know, so when I, when I look at things, I, I understand that step one, maybe step two, step three. But now we're talking about doing more work over in the new jail. What's that gonna cost? I mean, that's not gonna be free, and that's not gonna appease the prosecutor or all his staff.
Moving, moving anybody is gonna make them all in.
Well, I understand that.
We've learned that already.
But I guess, I guess when I look at it, I wanna look at, at what step one, step two, steps three, maybe the first five steps. What are those totally gonna cost? And maybe, you know, maybe we can only spend 2.4 million right now. But if we're gonna be spending this stuff over the next several years, I mean, why not take a look at doing it all now? Even if we have to go borrow a little money, instead of continuing to pay maintenance on the Carnegie Building, you know, and having to replace this big unit over here at the courthouse, you know? I mean, that unit's old. Do we need to take a look at replacing that now? And.
You know, that's, that's something we've talked about as an option on the day. Because we don't know what the cost will be.
Right.
Just ballpark, and I would not hold you to this. What's the general rule of thumb of finishing, already done shell space? We've got a pretty fair amount of shell space over there on the, on what floor you call it? Main floor?
Lower level.
Lower level? You know what I'm talking about? You guys helped build it.
Where our training stuff is now?
I mean, it's a, it's a fully built structure. It's just.
But the floor's not done.
It's concrete.
Yeah, it's done.
It would just require carpet or tile.
I mean, it's, the finish, all the concrete's.
Just in that one room.
I like the housing.
Just in that one room though, isn't it?
No. All the shell space has got.
Are we talking about the room where they do their training in?
Yes.
Okay.
What's that concrete floors?
But.
I'm just trying to get, get what it costs to finish shell space per square foot. Just ballpark number.
It's gonna be in the $30 or $50 per square foot.
Just to, I mean, it's not, I wouldn't hold you to it. It's just so we can get an idea. Because then all we have to do is figure out how many square foot that room is. Multiply it by 50, and it gives us the ballpark cost.
Yeah, and that takes care of putting the prosecutor over there. But then they don't have a training facility, or, or, you know, what else are we gonna have to finish to take care of that?
Okay, now hang on there for a second. Well, that's, that facility, that space was never designed to be a training facility.
Nope.
It was always designed for expansion. The reason it's a training facility is because we weren't using it for expansion, and you guys hopped into it. It's not, I mean, I, I don't view that as we have to relocate the sheriff's training facility because that space was never programmed for a training facility. It's kinda like if you have a garage, it's for the third car. You don't have a third car, so it's in storage. When you got the third car, you gotta put storage somewhere else because it wasn't designed to be.
You'll know that in a few years when your kids get 15 and.
I'm there, I had to relocate all of it.
It's good analogy.
Thank you.
My great Chris, so if we're gonna be doing this, and that's where I would look more at going up with the fourth floor. And if we don't have money to do it, I don't necessarily wanna borrow it. What kinda timeline does it put us on to have the money to do it? I mean, we had our budget for it.
Well, fourth floor would add $655,000. We put the assessor in there, we're done.
That's finished.
Are we bringing the assessor over here?
Yeah, but if we're gonna shell it, then let's finish it so we can move it.
As I recall, the prosecutor needs more space than the assessor does.
Well, we wouldn't have to move them all, but at least they'd all be in the same building.
And that might be a different discussion amongst us.
Which is another 225 on top of it.
Which I think that's kinda where this started a while back, was trying to move people around, get them out of the Carnegie Building. It was like, well, let's go ahead and move this project. We've been sitting on it for two and a half, three years.
The, the extra floor, keep in mind, you could shell that.
It don't make sense to shell. I'll just go ahead and do it and get them out.
The concept is we would finish it because we'd be moving people into it.
Yeah, we're just wanting to go ahead and move it, so.
That's just where I'm at. I don't wanna look at it. I mean, I don't wanna look at it. About a five-year plan, and if we have to bite it all off right now to do it, let's, let's do that and try to accomplish all our.
It looks like just ballparking the number. I mean, you're talking an extra, a million dollars. Soup to nuts, is what the difference is, to finish that fourth floor off, move either the assessor over, or move the prosecutor over, and just be done.
I think that's high.
Well, I'd rather be high and come in at 800,000 than say it's 700,000 and find out that it's 900,000. So I don't, I don't disagree with that.
How much money is it gonna cost to come and do it later versus doing it now at the 655 number? I mean, that's something else you could look at. Try to do it five or 10 years from now.
Sure. You're gonna, you're gonna pay an extra at least 15, 20% for the second mobilization and general wire install.
Well, you have shell space, and somebody's gonna put stuff in it, so.
Make it a training room. All right, so what I would suggest is, this is just my two cents. I think we need to keep the project moving.
I do too.
Because I think if we stop, inertia becomes difficult to restart again. So I think we should keep the project moving. I think we should definitely sit down and look at the numbers. And if we can add the fourth floor, we might as well, we might as well do it. Recognizing that that potentially increases the structural cost, but that's, it sounds flippant. It's not intended to be, that's just dollars. It's figuring out where they come from. If they are available to come from. And that requires us to do some work, as opposed to you guys doing some work. But I think we gotta keep the project going.
Adding the fourth floor, how long overall would it take to complete the project schedule?
It would not impact the project schedule.
Bless you.
Bless you. Thanks.
Okay. I mean, I'm fine with moving it forward. I just, I don't wanna take this project this year and another project next year and keep.
If we can do it all one shot, I think that's my far best option.
Keep whittling away, and, you know, if it, if it has to.
If we're, if we're that serious about the fourth floor, then I'd like to go back and talk to Dave and do anything I can to lighten the other floors as much as possible. So that's a discussion we'll have.
Okay. Well, do you guys have any other questions at this point?
No, not for Carrie. I appreciate this.
Keep moving forward?
Mm-hmm.
Keep moving forward, Jeff?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you all very much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you all. Appreciate your help and assistance in this, as always. Thank you very much.
We've got some layoffs for this. We probably need to just have a meeting and just talk about where we're gonna put people and try to get the other elected officials on board.
Have to do it this week.
I mean, all we do is take away their keys for the other building after we have this one ready for them.
So I've got some dates when I'm in and out. I know you've got some dates when you're in and out.
Yeah, I'm here, I can be here this week, but next week I'm gone.
I, I suggest that the dates I'm out, you guys can have those meetings.
You want us to do the janitorial supplies then?
Oh yeah, you could add that one to the agenda when I'm gone.
I don't mind doing it in the evening either, after, you know, we get done running around during the day and stuff. We've got a lot of other scheduled meetings.
10:30, you guys wanna keep going and take a quick break? Let's take a quick break. All right, five-minute break, then we'll come back. Thank you all.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Nice for all, just like them.
So, wait, Jeff?
I had a, it's right next to me.
I know, I was glad you were here. You're gonna be fine, you're gonna have a color.
He's not, he's not. I'm just talking about that, that feels. I'm all for it. Because part of the answer is what the judges.
Don't tell her I said.
And they're gonna pay for the stuff that they want. I'd explain to them that, you know, you want, you want, she says, we're not paying for $1,000.
No, but I want some kind of. So, I mean, you know, we run into some stuff that, oh, well, we need this. We need this.
In fact, we'll make a copy. I'm pretty down on the policy, you know, as well.
This is a different color, man.
I'd be happy to.
Okay.
I don't think that's on the scene.
You do it a lot better if you're sitting there sticking there's four foot.
You're sitting there going, I won't talk much. You're talking.
Let me start whenever you gotta use your coffee cup.
Okay.
Yeah.
How was it? Thank you all. Appreciate it, Dave. Right, Dave.
David.
Okay. All right. I thought we had David, David. David, Dana, okay. All right. It's like he's over here saying that. But. Come over here, then you go over there. I know some people are for a little bit. They just straightened out. I get on her saying some of this stuff, that's simple stuff. And I don't think things like this happen. You shouldn't have to be like. Especially if it's rated. Yeah, so we're all there. Tell them I tried to have everybody in here. We get everybody to talk about it. That was what makes it easy. Oh, yeah.
Oh my God. I think, I don't think so. I think he was under the impression that the Smith somehow thought the baby was a Thatcher. And that's not the case. So I don't know if he was just confused or what. But then I showed him, no, I put the Reagan Thatcher on there. And kind of sort of dropped it after that, I guess, that Smith guy. Somehow even the impression that he made tit for tat. And I'm like, well, and the thing I hate is, he thinks that it's, you know, he thinks that's what he was just. He's not supposed to be it, you know?
Yeah. It's part of the challenge.
I know.
Standing out of the way.
Notice he always sits there so the cameras can't get him.
Oh, that camera can get me. Oh.
It's lacking.
Yeah. Hey, hey, just let me just say this. It's nothing, it's nothing in person. Not towards me. Nothing personal.
Cardinal shirt, huh?
Yep. You are?
Yeah.
Who's the last person to get coffee?
You are?
Who's the last person to get coffee?
I don't drink coffee, so what do you mean?
Did you just get coffee?
I got a decaf.
Which one did you? You left like this much left in the pot. And your cup's not even full, so you didn't have to make it a pot. Oh, you got decaf? Who got regular?
I got decaf.
Not me, I got decaf.
It's a green, man.
Somebody, we're trying to figure out, is this doing that? Is that every time we go in there, this much coffee left in it?
That's actually awesome.
I gotta bring a decaf. It's very frustrating.
It's rude.
If you look at the cameras, you'll see a person that walked out about two minutes ago that wasn't in the commission meeting.
Really? Who's that?
I don't know. I'm not an narc.
You are a narc. You are a narc. You got that one all wrong.
Wheeler.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I think that it just happened to ring at that point.
Is there anybody on the other end there?
Hey, I got it right there.
I'm still in a commission meeting, so.
Yeah, I knew this was gonna be long.
Hey, let me ask you a question here. How, how well are you at catching dogs?
Who he's talking to?
I'll let them know. Aaron's in.
I didn't know he got.
Okay, I gotta go. You probably should, you should probably start looking for a job, I'm just saying. Larry's right here beside me. I, I don't think that's true. I think he is very smart. Aaron, why would you use those kind of words about Larry?
We're still up.
Y'all, hey, Jeff, you ready?
He's just going, Wheeler.
So who was it that walked out of there, John?
I didn't see nobody. I'm just kidding. Sorry, you know.
Debbie, we need to start monitoring who it is that takes that la, all the coffee, but the last little portion.
Okay, we put a camera, security camera.
There you go.
Listen to it.
Huh? Who's got a full cup? That's what we should do.
We were checking on that, but everybody's claiming they put decaf in their cups.
Was it beans this morning?
I mean, Larry and Larry.
That's what you heard from Mark.
Oh, that's from Mark. I don't know those numbers.
I'm sorry.
Shouldn't he be saying?
For his overtime?
Yes.
By over late to your meeting? For yesterday or last night?
This morning, yesterday morning. I don't understand all these numbers that shops the baking.
I'm sorry, I usually chose the name.
Words would be so much better. Yeah, words still a lot.
See, now we waited so long.
I didn't bring any coffee either.
Did you see the remote for the adapter?
What? There, Debbie. That don't one. What else we got? Bid awards.
Yes.
I'll get you those bid awards after this is over with.
You can tell me before.
The good news is I don't have a headache yet. I assume that's probably on its way. No, it's been kind of a nice meeting so far, but we're getting into bid awards and stuff now.
You already have it in there? I don't see janitorial written on there, so we're gonna.
For what? This? Yeah, but you're gonna need permission to get this from me. These are private notes.
I got it covered. Oh, thanks.
I don't think you could read them anyway. Well, it's a makku.
Well, I mean, there.
What do you got, Mark?
If you put a few of them, that's okay. I have a CD, I'll just jump into you.
They won't get these.
I've seen that.[1654.61]
They won't get mine. Mine have notes on them. We can tell, uh, tell them to get you a copy, to leave a copy for you. I wrote all of mine. Debbie's got one? Okay. They didn't have it on the agenda either.
What did you say?
Boom.
I don't envy you. I'm not seeing how it is. Yeah, I got it.
I hear you.
He didn't want some coffee too, so we better take another break. Yeah, he's all zone. He can go zone.
So how many do you need, Tommy?
I got mine. I'll take care of myself.
I'll take care of myself?
Didn't mean that.
Mark and Jeff's coffee.
My coffee's done. Mark's still waiting for his. That's the good thing about being single. You can be selfish. And you don't have to worry about things like, I don't know. Y'all like ask your, what's my horoscope say? And then he says, well, when's your birthday? That's not good. It's September, right? May? No, we got married. When's we getting married? I got divorcee dates on my calendar. Oh, yeah.
Those, those are dates to celebrate?
I open up that file, I take it out of the safe, because it says to keep those in safe places. I'm like, hell, yeah. He read through it and reminisce.
Are we still on the air?
Yeah.
Okay.
Jeff, I just got divorced on the same day of marriage.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you're not, don't, don't encourage him, Larry.
Don't feed the health. You want coffee before we sit down? I didn't go get you any, so, sorry.
All right. Uh, bid awards, twenty fourteen, twenty seven air filters.
Um, we got one point five bid for this. I know every time we only get one bid, the question comes the best wide, so I wanted to address that real quick. Greg wanted to do local, so that he didn't have to stock them, and they're readily available, so it left us with three people we contacted. After it was posted on the website, and denim was issued shortly after, he called them individually, and they all knew about it. Only one came back with the additional sizes. And so we technically have one bid. That's the recommendation is for Telco, and that's kind of why we only have one bid, and you can make a horse to water.
Megan Gert. Sorry, Betty.
Maggie.
Betty.
This is. Those minutes, can I see them? Thank you.
All right. So I, I just got a question here real quick. Looks like, for the most part, the prices are pretty close, except for items three and four. And, uh, I mean, there's a huge discrepancy there. And so I'm just wondering, are they bidding the same thing? Is it the same type?
Same size, all the sizes were given to them, uh, the size, or. They were all bidding micro, uh, Merbait filter, which is specific to.
Okay.
Size of the filter, so.
Don't know. Okay. Good enough.
Okay.
I moved the award, the bid to Telco.
Second. My motion's second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those pose, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is bid award twenty fourteen dash twenty eight for senders.
Um, this one we got two, which is one more than one, so that's a good thing. I'm talking to Larry for this, and the recommendation is for the lowest available contractor.
Okay, I, I got questions.
Okay.
Um, so. Anyway, I'm familiar with BTI. Stiefman Construction Services, never heard of them.
I haven't either. Dwayne's always been good to work with. He's.
Yeah. Well, and that's, I mean. Well, and that's kind of what I was wondering. I mean, is somebody just throwing a, a price out there? I mean.
I don't know. You know, Steve.
What, uh, I mean, what's, uh, how far is Thomas Hill?
It's six, probably more than sixty miles, isn't it?
It's a fair distance up the highway.
So do we, do we have a price per ton on what the senders cost?
It's included in there.
Right, but do we, do we know what the sender price is?
When we bought them, we bought, uh, since Shmoys went out of business, we bought some, they're actually a little more expensive and labid-y.
Twelve, roughly. So ten dollars a ton, when they're hauling, probably what, twenty-five ton load, or?
Yeah, they're, they're hauling with their semis.
Mm-hmm.
Or dump trucks pulling pups, so.
So I mean, is this pretty comparable to what we paid last year, or?
Yeah.
Right at it? I was just curious. I mean, I didn't know why somebody else wouldn't bid the hauling too. It just seems odd.
Most of it, it's, they don't, um, some don't get it, trucks to be able to dedicate, because we've got it written in their work. When we call, we get it fairly quickly.
And they're the only ones that's got a decent fleet of trucks that can do it.
Bisjes has got to.
I'm good. I was just asking.
Okay. Any other questions?
Nope.
Entertained motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's second to award this.
This just.
Bisting.
Bisting.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, motion carries. Uh, approval and signing of renewal, good lord, of MOU from MoDHSS.
This is the MOU that gives us access to the state, um, data set, so we can process birth and death certificates.
Okay.
Yeah, which is the Indian very important for us.
And no cost?
It is point two four two cents per transaction, but we get fifteen dollars for every birth certificate, thirteen dollars for a death certificate, and ten dollars for every subsequent one, so.
So, okay. It costs us two cents?
Costs us two cents and.
Point two four two cents per transaction.
And then people, individuals pay us for the birth certificate?
And death certificate.
So they pay five, ten dollars for your two cents worth?
Point two cents.
Point two cents.
All right, I entertain a motion to approve the MOU with DHSS.
So moved.
Second.
Call roll, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Uh, roll call vote. MOU is approved.
Thank you.
Approval and signing of twenty fourteen STD testing program MOU and STD testing program procedural guidelines.
This is the, the MOU with DHSS, so we can have our STD program, they provide meds, we do the contact investigations, and do the testing, and try to keep the STD under control.
Uh, you sign this one.
Well, you have been signing it. Basically, it's a PDF. I couldn't alter it, so I figured I'd just wipe my name out, but yours.
Okay. Uh, any discussion? Otherwise, entertain a motion to approve the MOU and the guidelines.
So moved.
Second. Motion's second, call roll.
Yes.
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 There you go. Discussion, oh, boy, this is gonna be a fun one.
Does that need to go through the clerk's office and, uh?
Yeah, those agreements have to go to the clerk, so. Hey, Betty, real quick, while you're, do you have the minutes from last week yet?
I'm working on it.
Okay. Well, I just have a question, because we've got a document here, and I didn't, I thought we'd already approved, but we may not have, I don't know.
Is that what the Architects Alliance?
Yeah, we voted to approve the contract. I don't know what this is. As opposed to their contract?
I can show you the document that you actually signed last week.
Yeah.
And then we got that after, so maybe it is part of it? I don't know. I'll show you what.
I thought we approved it.
The one you signed before was just a few pages.
Right.
It was kind of like a letter kind of thing. Then that's the AIA contract.
All right. So you think we need to vote it separately?
I don't know. We've already voted to approve everything, other than there's provisions there.
Well, I saw that, yeah.
Is that the contract?
This is the form agreement, like, standard form.
Well, we can just vote it, and then that way it is covered.
I'll do it real quick. I entertain a motion to approve the contract, uh, with Architects Alliance.
Second.
Motion's second, call roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, my roll call votes approved. Thank you. Okay, leash law, sorry about that.
Uh, just after our discussions last week, just wanted to get this back on the agenda to discuss that possibility further. Um, I guess everybody looked at Jill's comments on what all that involves, and, um, anyway, I. I've probably gotten more calls in favor of this.
Really?
Than, uh, um, so, anyway. I don't know, I'm, frankly, I'm tired of listening to people about their dogs and, and I. I don't know. I understand that there's gonna be a cost associated with doing something like this, but, uh. Anyway, I just wanted to get it back out there and, and see if there's even a possibility that, that you guys would consider enacting a, a leash law? Or if you would rather go to those, those urbanized areas and, and want them to petition us to, to do something similar to Westview Heights? And then what, where do we take all these animals if we start picking them up?
My preference is, uh, if, if a neighborhood wants to circulate their petition, bring it up to us. Um, I'm, we've always said, historically, we're okay with that. I'm not in support of a countywide leash law. I understand there are isolated, unique circumstances where these issues arise. And in a county that's, how many square miles are we here, Larry? A bundle.
A bundle.
A whole bunch of square miles. We're talking about a few acres where we have issues. And I'm just not willing to, to go down that road with a leash law. But I'm one to three.
Right.
I'm along the same lines. I, the leash law, I think is, I don't know, I think it's too much for the few problems that we have. I wish we could do something more along the lines of a nuisance law. But I don't know how many more phone calls we'll have. I haven't had anybody call me supporting a leash law.
I haven't either.
So, I don't know. Southwood Hills, and I've been invited to go meet with Senator Keough in their office and talk to some constituents from Southwood Hills area Friday. I don't know really what to tell them. It's, I wish we could do something. I don't know exactly what a nuisance law would do. I don't know, we've, I don't know if you got that letter a while back, Chris, and he might have been, might not have been up there. We got one from one of them out there in Southwoods.
I remember them coming up, yeah.
That was, Chris Wrigley though, was on there, so. Something along that line, if you wanna, I think you got a copy of that too, Mark.
Three hundred ninety-nine point zero eight square miles. Thanks to Bing.
Well. Uh, you know, I just, my perspective is, um, you know, we had, I've been here for seven and a half years, just slightly over. We have twice had this issue come up. Once in Southwood Hills, and now in Saint, in the city of Saint Martins. The Southwood Hills issue, at least arguably, we have some jurisdiction over, because they're not incorporated. Uh, when Rob Hamilton was here, was that last week? Yeah. We have no jurisdiction inside the city of Saint Martins on this issue.
Right.
I mean, if we were to pass, if we were to pass the most restrictive leash law in the nation, we couldn't enforce it inside the city of Saint Martins. I guess I'm, with respect to that particular issue, I just, it boggles my mind that he won't go to his, his city to have them enforce the law. Instead, wants us to enforce it outside of where he lives, but not where he lives, because we couldn't. I mean, if we were to enforce it, we would have to catch the dog while he was in the woods. But if we caught the dog, if hypothetically, if John's folks caught the dog sitting out on the front porch, we'd have to say, you have a dog in the front porch. We're not authorized doing anything. That's how I see it, don't you? I don't mean, I don't mean to put you guys on the spot, but, you know, it's, so, in seven and a half years, it's come up twice, two places.
It doesn't do any good if they pick the dog up and then they cite the owner, if the prosecutor's not gonna prosecute it either. So it becomes a, a problem, you know, from start to finish, not, not just at the start.
Yeah, I, I have a different issue on that. I mean, that's, prosecutor should enforce the laws, right? If he chooses not to do it, that's for the voters to address, and there is an election this year.
I don't know. I, um, I got a real problem when people call me about dogs and tell them that I can't help them do anything about it, and if they feel threatened, that they need to shoot it. I don't think that's a very good recourse. I don't think that's. Maybe that's the way it is, um, but that's, I mean, I, I just feel like that's gonna lead to future problems and, um. I don't know. I mean, and do I tell people to go get chickens, so the dog will chase their chicken, so they can drill it? I mean, you know, basically. I mean, you know, there's, there's ways around it, you know? That dog was chasing my livestock. You know, I, I just don't feel like that's a very good answer, and, um, and so, you know, we, we make our, we, we have to make our kids behave, but we don't. We don't have to make people take care of their pets or their dogs, unless, unless they're abusing them, and then, then they'll come in and they'll, you know? They don't feed them and water them for months, and then we'll come in and we'll, and we'll do something about it. With, with livestock.
We, we don't, I hate to say it, we don't force parents to take care of their kids. We sometimes have to pick up the kids when they don't feed them, when they abuse them.
Well, but we have, we, we can come take their kids away, I mean.
Only if they're violating the law. I mean, if it's one o'clock in the morning, and there's a five-year-old sitting out on the front porch at somebody's house, and I guess you could ask them, that there's really no grounds to arrest them if they're not doing anything wrong. I mean, that's, you know, we have kids roaming around neighborhoods all over. Inside the city, they have a curfew. In the county, we don't have a curfew. Do we want to pass a curfew then? I mean, there's a point where we can, we can pass laws to restrict every behavior, but at a certain point, people have to become responsible for themselves.
Situation, they tell you what, how we're gonna react as far as when it comes to juveniles, when it comes to animals. So, we gotta stay within the bounds of the law, so. You know, and if you look at the RSMO statute, uh, for animals, one of the things it does, defines the dog as, as a male or female over the age of six months. So, I mean, even the, even the RSMO statute is, is a little, can be problematic whenever you go to, to pass a law, because then, it's an actual, it's not actually a dog until six months old, according to statute.
So do we have a nuisance law that y'all could cite them on, or is that something the county's gotta have?
You don't, we don't have one, and you can't pass one. I don't believe, is that correct?
That's correct. The nuisance in our situation has a definition, and it applies to trash, junk cars, thieves, and all of that in the health statutes. So when you think of a general nuisance, that's, that's not how it applies. We don't have authority to go outside of that.
Okay, so that's something that, you know, we can address with Senator Keough, and say, if you wanna try to do something to help the constituents, we need statutory authority to be able to do a nuisance law. Because if you have a certain, and that's kind of along the same line as zoning, which this does not, zoning doesn't address this whatsoever, but, uh, you know, in one of the meetings, one of the gentlemen said, you know, we've got a way of life, and we've got the right to live that way of life, and zoning will help that. Whereas a nuisance law, if you got a dog coming over there and tearing your yard up, some people are not comfortable taking care of the issue themselves. Or if they're scared for their life, because they, they don't wanna go outside, because they're scared of that dog, they're not gonna take care of it themselves. There needs to be something they can do. But I'm not gonna go as far as saying, everybody out there in the country has to have their cow, dog, and everything leased up at all times. I think we're going too far there, so. I don't know, if, if y'all wanna meet with Senator Keough on Friday, I'm sure y'all are welcome. I'm not sure if I'm gonna make it. I'm gonna sure try to, but I don't know, see any other avenues that we can try, throw out there? Any ideas?
Well, I think.
It's been frustrating.
I mean, I think. I think the only ordinance that we could pass would, would limit the leash law to areas where the population density was more than three parcels per acre, is that right, or?
Well, that's the current definition. There's no reason.
So, so, so let me use Rob Hamilton's example, since he's the one who brought it up.
Right.
Where he lives, which I'm generally familiar with, the leash law would not apply to the people whose dogs are running.
Right.
So, we will have passed a leash law to infringe upon hypothetically Don L's, I know you, I know it's not an issue, but Don L's dog. To address a concern raised by somebody in a jurisdiction we can't do anything with, and the ordinance that we would pass would not restrict the dog that is the cause of the complaint. And I don't think Southwood Hills is three parcels per acre either.
Probably not.
I mean, we would end up going to Wood, to Woodward Lake subdivision, where we've never had a complaint, well, I don't, I guess it's never, I'm not, I don't recall any complaints from Woodward acre subdivision. Or Rainbow Hills, or Gateway, where there are three parcels per acres, smaller lots, and we would be telling them they can't let their dogs run. While every neighborhood where we get a complaint, we'd be saying, we're not gonna do anything for you guys. We are gonna restrict somebody else's rights who've done, they don't have a problem.
Yeah, I, I admit that it's not a, a perfect, a perfect scenario. I mean, I don't, I don't know what the answer is, but, you know. The answer that, that I'm getting by the law is not a good answer either.
No, I mean, there, one of the answers is you can always live in a city. If you live in a city and the city's not enforcing their own ordinances, then you have an option, which is go to the city and raise hell and make them enforce their ordinances, or run for office. I don't mean in a bad sense, but that's, that's your recourse. You live out in the county, and part of the reason people wanna live in the county is because they don't wanna live inside a city. And they don't want some of these restrictions. You know, you look at something like the zoning measure that's coming forward, which I think is a good idea, and I don't think restricts people's rights. In the end, one of the reasons people are gonna be against it is, hey, if they want zoning, they could live in Jeff City. And a lot of people don't wanna live in Jeff City. Or in Saint Martins, or in Taos, or. Or in St. Martins, or in Taos, or in any other, they wanna live out in the countryside. They wanna shoot their fireworks, they wanna let their dogs run.
You don't live in a country that have kids coming to do donuts in your front yard and tear your yard up, though, and that's essentially what some of these dogs are doing, they're destroying.
Can't you, uh, can't you make a complaint? If, if some, if, if somebody comes in my front yard and tears up my front yard, a kid comes in my front yard and destroys my stuff.
Well, yeah, you can, and that.
Can I file a complaint?
But now, if a dog comes in there and is digging up your front yard.
Oh, if, if a dog's digging up my front yard, and it, and it's property destruction, can I file a complaint?
Who are you gonna go after?
The owner of the dog, they're responsible for the dog.
Is this your dog, sir?
No.
He lives with me, but he ain't my dog.
And that's exactly right.
Yeah, there's, so, there's no attached, it's not licensed necessarily, you know what I'm saying? Well, we got the license plate off your dog, uh, he was digging your yard up, we're gonna have to cite you or take you in.
Uh, there is, to a certain extent, they have a rabies tag, and the rabies tag are sequentially numbered and they're registered, and you know who's, you know who has.
How many of them have chips out there? County though.
But, but the thing about the, the rabies tag is, you have to have a rabies tag.
There's no state law that they have to have, no, I wish there was.
There's a county ordinance that says that you need to be vaccinated.
Okay, so we, you have to be vaccinated for rabies, dogs have to be vaccinated for rabies.
Say, the problem dogs are probably also gonna be the ones that don't have shots, don't have chips, don't have any rules.
Put them down.
They don't care.
Put them down.
Well, that's where we run into problems, with people that aren't comfortable with taking it into their own hands and doing it, you know, I'd say probably.
Call the neighbor who is comfortable. But I mean, in the end, you know, this is part, we live in a society where you're supposed to have some personal responsibility. I go back to my Saturday, we've had every single law we end up passing. It's because in a room of a hundred people, there's one person who won't follow the rule. You know, we have a law against yelling "fire" in a theater, because there's one idiot in a crowd of six hundred who might say, hey, it'd be fun to yell "fire" in a theater.
I don't disagree with that.
And we restrict the rights of everybody else.
Well, I'll mention something to Senator Keough about the nuisance law.
Have the state, have the state pass a law saying it. Let them take the, if they really think it's important enough. Have Senator Keough.
I don't disagree.
Have Senator Keough come out and make a press announcement that he's going to pass a statewide leash law. Right before he goes on the ballot in November for election.
Leash law, if you have a state ordinance, nuisance ordinance, 'cause that, that doesn't require about having their animal, I think that's going too far and just infringes on everything. But if you have a nuisance law that says this dog is, infringing on your way of life, or your property, you have some kind of action you can take without destroying the dog. Because it's not necessarily the dog's fault.
I agree, I agree with what you're saying, Joe, but the problem is, people can do that now, they can sue civilly. They can do that now, but the problem you're gonna have, and even if you have a nuisance law, you still have to prove, especially if you're gonna change this into a criminal thing, you gotta prove beyond reasonable doubt that it was this guy's dog that did it at this particular time.
This dog's holding you hostage in your house and you can take him to court civilly, or what?
No, I'm talking about the property statute. This dog is holding you hostage in your house.
I'll go to the next step, then, he's holding you hostage, you're scared to go out to your car to.
Okay, so, you know, your wife, now you don't have one, so I can say.
That's why I'm so happy.
Your, your wife is scared of snakes, and she sees a snake in the yard, and therefore she won't come out of the house. Does she need to call the sheriff and say, hey, sheriff, there's a snake in my yard, I'm scared of it? And it's a four-inch-long garter snake, but I'm terrified of snakes? Or there's a spider web on my front porch and I'm terrified of spiders? Can the sheriff come over and clear the spider off? How far down the line are we gonna take this?
Animal control will come out and get the snake out of your yard if you call them.
Not inside the county, not in the county, they won't.
Yeah, they will, I'll guarantee you, if you got a big old snake.
You got a four-inch garter snake on the front porch and somebody's afraid to come out of the house, you guys are gonna respond to that call.
Snake on his way, we won't care, but who knows?
And if somebody, and if you've got a dog on the front porch that's keeping you from walking out of the house, you'll come out and shoo the dog away and let him out of the house?
The problem.
I'll be right back to you.
So will the snake. Or the, or the spider. You know, people are scared, people are scared of being outside. Do we need to go have a special ordinance to allow everybody to be safe outside?
Snakes don't chase you like the dogs don't chase you. Spiders don't chase you, they could all kill you. I, I see your point.
It just goes too far, it just goes too far.
But when you got people living in a neighborhood and they, they've got just one problem animal.
Well, and, you know, the one, the most recent one that came up here, they have a recourse, they have a solution. I don't even know why we're addressing that issue. That particular one.
Right, I'm, I'm not talking about that issue, I mean, I, it's just.
Southwood Hills still has a problem, and like I said, they, they, they say, well, county officials can't do anything about it, we'll go to the next step, I guess, and.
Well, and that's not true, however, we told them, if you wanna circulate a petition and get it signed by seventy-five percent of the neighbors, we would do something. Do you remember that? You were here for that.
Yeah.
And they can't do it. If it was only one person in the neighborhood that was the problem, you would have no problem getting seventy-five percent signed.
I don't know, it's just, if, if I might have to go through, oh, this worked at Foreign and Home Association.
See you guys.
Petition signed and do all that. I don't know, it's just not something that they should have to do to get this taken care of. But it's always that one problem person that brings it back to. And I don't wanna have some kind of ordinance out there that all people are doing is using it to get at their neighbors. I don't like neighbors, so I'm just gonna call them in as a nuisance, and.
We get phone calls for, people will say that the dog gets vicious. And according to the law, the dog's not vicious unless a judge says it's vicious. And the judge is only gonna say it's vicious if it's bitten more than twice.
Twice or more.
Twice or more, I beg your pardon. So, there's, there's, we can only react within the bounds of the law, I understand the frustration, but.
Actually.
It's a can of worms.
In our ordinance, there is a, our provision's addressing vicious dogs, and there's a definition of a vicious dog, and it's not, you have to bite it twice. In fact, if it, it exhibits a pattern of biting or attacking, or attempting to bite or attack human beings or other domesticated animals. And so then, if it is a vicious dog and that, and I'm guessing the commission is the body that would determine that, there you go. There are other limitations, such as you have to confine the dog, and it goes on and on, even liability insurance. But anyway, that's in county ordinance.
It's a we have an ordinance. There you go.
But one that doesn't have any teeth.
Well, that's 'cause upstairs. And it doesn't, we, I mean, there's not, that's, that's a problem we can't solve. You know, as long as the person upstairs refuses to enforce the ordinance, there's nothing you can do about it. You can pass, and we can pass, say we even came to an agreement on ordinance, it would make no difference if he's not willing to enforce it.
Right.
Different prosecutor, maybe.
Yeah.
But that's, that's a subject for November's election, not for today.
That particular issue.
All right, you wanna keep?
No, no, let's move on.
Well, I mean, I think, maybe, Joe, if you wanna update everybody on that nuisance ordinance, send out something, just reminding folks about it, including prosecutor, that we do have a nuisance ordinance. It does provide dogs that are, whatever the definitions you just said were.
Oh, okay, well, we have an animal control ordinance, because nuisance is Christie.
Sorry, we have an animal control ordinance, it does have provisions, just reinforce it. At least that way it's out there, and we do have this on the books. We should enforce it if there's a, a dangerous situation.
Then I'll append a copy of.
Like it. Something's better than nothing.
Yeah, it's true.
All right, discussion FF and E for EMS project.
No, it just keeps getting better.
Well, it depends what you guys want to talk about first, the radio side.
Let me see which one comes up first. First one that comes up on my list is interoperable communications Motorola solutions. Luck of the draw there, Mike.
That's fine. I don't know how far you got into reading that, but the bottom line is this, it is the whole shoot and match, soup to nuts, to get everything moved up front, update our data system, and, like I say, get us up front parts, labor the whole shoot and match soup to nuts. Motorola's vendor for the state is Wireless USA. You'll see a couple or three different titled parts, labor, and stuff like that from Wireless. Like I say, they are the vendors, you get a Motorola system, they are the vendor for the state that installs that, and so on. So, the labor, when you look at that, it is sole source to Wireless USA, there's no other company that handles that. So, just to bring that out there from a sole source aspect, that is why it was broken down via Wireless. You'll look at the Motorola side of it, you'll look at the parts side of it, you'll look at the equipment side of it, like I say, soup to nuts, starts to finish, it brings us up front, updates our equipment, and keeps dispatch going. Second to the fleet and personnel, dispatch is the, one of the most mission-critical areas we have. And through the years, we have deferred updating equipment to the expansion, which we are doing now, and that brings us here to that. I'll be glad to answer any questions on that.
So, what's the total here?
Total is, like I say, soup to nuts, one hundred twenty-six seventy-five dot ninety-five.
Keep reading, I'm just trying to figure out how I get all these numbers to match up, 'cause I get eighty-two, seven twenty-eight. Plus thirty-one, plus twenty-nine, plus sixty-four.
The thirty-one, four seventy-four, when you look at that, is the labor included, which is broken down on the next page, so subtract the thirty-one from the twenty-nine, you come up with sixteen ninety-three dot twenty-two. That's for the headsets, the amplifiers, and things like that, so, like I say, that's the equipment side of it. They just included the labor in that, you go to the next page, the labor quote is broken down into exactly what generated that number. Total of one hundred twenty-one thousand, one twenty-six seventy-five, round up to one hundred one.
And we don't have any of the stuff that we can use. I mean, we have to literally chuck a hundred percent of our equipment, just throw it out the window, and we can't reuse anything.
We have to move up front, other than a chair, the existing telephones that we have, essentially.
What's a console electronic shelf?
It's a piece of furniture that would.
We have to buy twenty-five thousand dollars worth of shelving?
That is specific to dispatch, the only thing that we've included in dispatch is this equipment here. There are a few items on the FF and E side, the general work platform that we'll have in there, but, like I say, soup to nuts for the radios and everything is included right here.
I was trying to find this bit, did I miss, is this the only place we can get it from?
Yes, Motorola, yes.
Nobody else can supply it, so they basically can just price it however they want, or do we have a waiver?
Understate contract.
It's understate contract, yeah.
Okay, thank you, that answered no question, very well.
So, the reason that we can't reuse all this stuff is because it's outdated, it's.
It's outdated, some of it, I know we'll make the move. Like I say, the antenna is gonna stay where it's at, we're moving two hundred feet from that antenna, so there are a lot of parts and a lot of labor that are involved in that. It's from a construction side, with the way the building is oriented, and the way the hillside is and everything else, it's prohibited to, to move the tower based on the architects and everything that we have going on for up front with the construction, so.
We acquired this while we took over for Capital Region, could you put a guess on how old this equipment is?
Twelve to thirteen years. Like I say, this equipment is substantially outdated. If we would have a piece break, they don't even make it anymore, so, we are skating the ninth edge, what technology, you can use it until it quits working, then you'd have to move up where we're at now. So, like I say, for the past five years, we have deferred this to the expansion. And that is where we're at today.
So, basically, all the stuff that you got's going in the trash?
Yes, I mean, you know, other than, there, there's no trade-in value, like I said, it's twelve-year-old technology that we've inherited from the previous system with Capital Region.
Oh, you look at computers and they're pretty much obsolete after five years in the morning.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna go back to the quote, you got a twenty-nine and a thirty-one thousand, I know y'all were talking about that a while ago.
Okay, let's go to the sheet that has.
What's the bottom line?
The bottom.
Thirty, is that what you said?
What's that?
Thirty thousand?
Hundred and twenty-one thousand.
Hundred and twenty-one thousand.
Where you been?
Well, I was trying to find a quote, oh, there's an eighty-two. Oh, Nike's. Okay, I wasn't ready for that. Let's go back to talking about the dog issue.
You have to keep in mind, we're the unique service that we dispatch ourselves.
But you have to look at some of this stuff and just do a, a sanity test on it. For example, I, I will use one example. Item twenty-one, do you have a copy in front of you, Mike? Item twenty-one, seventeen-inch monitor with touchscreen.
Right.
Okay? Stock price, twenty-one hundred. The extended price, we get discount, eighteen hundred. Okay?
Right.
So, I just Googled it, nothing more, just Googled it. I can't find one for more than six hundred dollars.
It's a Motorola touchscreen monitor.
It's a touch, it's not a Motorola, it doesn't even say Motorola, it just says seventeen-inch touchscreen monitor.
I understand it.
That's a standard mon, that's just a standard piece of equipment. It's plug and play. And they're six hundred bucks, but if you get it through the state contract, it's eighteen hundred dollars. I mean, that's, I'm having a hard time, I mean, I, all honesty, Mike, I know the radios are expensive. Because we've done enough radios up here, I know that. I don't even, I don't even know enough about the radios to argue the radios. The radio's the radio. I know you're gonna lay out, you know, big dollars for radio. I know when you buy a server, you lay out big dollars for server, I don't, that stuff doesn't even, I hate to say, doesn't faze me, because I know it's expensive. But, you know, eighteen hundred dollars for a touchscreen monitor? I mean, we're getting gouged.
It's, it's Motorola, it's a Motorola system, Mark, it's like buying iPhone or, or anything else, I, I understand.
Can't you just buy the radios and the servers?
You cannot, you cannot just pick and choose what's gonna interface with that system. It is a complete Motorola system, just like the state of Missouri has an Moswin system that operates under the same parameters that this Motorola system does, they use the same monitors and computer interfaces and anything else.
If the monitor breaks, you got the system in, okay?
You go back to Motorola to get that monitor, you cannot just go off the street.
You can't, and you, you can't just like have a computer person come in and say, oh, yeah, that's a seventeen-inch monitor with touchscreen, I got those in the basement for two fifty. Can't do it.
No.
Why not?
You can't, because you have to go to Motorola to get that monitor.
Why can't you do that? What, what I'm not understanding is, what, I understand that Motorola tells you, hey, we'll replace that monitor for you.
I understand it.
But why can't you go buy one off the shelf?
I don't know, Mark, I'm not a radio engineer, I'm an EMS director.
Well, this isn't a radio issue.
It is to make the radio work, Mark, it is.
I'm getting too far.
You're getting way in the weeds, I've got everything broken down.
No, no, and that's, and, and I appreciate you doing that, I'm just looking at the stuff going, eighteen hundred dollars for a monitor? Our laptops, what do our laptops cost, Daddy?
Mark, our cardiac monitors are thirty-five thousand dollars, I mean.
And, and you know what, we didn't be, we didn't blink an eye at it, do we?
I know, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, because you can't, because you can't buy it anywhere, you know? The, you know, if I have to buy a desktop computer and a monitor, okay?
You have substantial choices.
You got, and if I buy a IBM desktop computer, okay? I've got the world options on the monitor I want.
We don't have that capability.
And I'm reading that we're buying a server, okay, which is a piece of standard computer equipment. We're buying, um, computers.
Right.
Standard pieces of equipment, and we're buying a monitor so you can use the computers. Standard piece of equipment.
From Motorola.
Well, I know that's their deal, I understand that.
But, Mark, I understand that, you cannot, you cannot do that. You cannot pick and choose and, and compile, and, and this different name and that different name. This is a global, here it is, system.
This is a global, here it is, system to make what we do now current functional and update us from twelve-year-old technology that is not repairable. We, like I say, this is, we have been in that building for nine years coming along.
See, you and I are just, Mike, I know you a long time, you and I are just missing each other in the entire discussion.
We are, and I see this was...
I agree, I agree you need to update your system.
We do.
Okay, I agree with that entirely.
We do.
Um, I agree you need new radios, you probably need the new software that goes with the radios, I assume that comes, I mean, I, I don't wanna speak for these two guys, but I don't think any of us disagree with that stuff, we know that. It's just some of this other stuff that's going into it is...
I understand, Mark.
Sounds to me like, I hate using this analogy, please hit, somebody hit me after I use it, please. It sounds to me like we need a regular, small pickup truck, and we're buying an Escalade.
Yeah.
Roll up windows.
Yeah.
All we need is, yeah, go ahead, hit me, I'm telling ya, all we need is something to get the job done, and somebody's looked at us and said, have I got a deal for you? I know, I know you need the twenty-two thousand dollar pickup truck, but I got a seventy-five thousand dollar pickup truck I'll sell ya, but it's for sixty-eight thousand, man, think how much you're coming out ahead since it's only sixty-eight thousand.
I hear your analogy, Mark, but this is not the Cadillac. This is a standard base Motorola system that is in Miller County, that's in Osage County, that's in other places that dispatch their own stuff. I'm not foolish enough to bite that. Short of hiring a consultant to come in here and tell us what we need, like we've done with the furniture, I've done that legwork.
Then my only two questions are...
Yes.
That I would like a specific answer from someone. I mean, actually, this question asked is, the twenty-four thousand dollars for console electronic shelves, okay? What is it in those shelves that is essential to the operation?
It's the interface for the radio and...
So it's not a shelf, it's a computer system?
It is part of that computer system.
Okay.
It's the data, because when we transmit, we transmit from a different facility up on Veth Drive, it is the mating of those two, I hate to use that word.
So, so when it says console electronic shelf, that's just a misnomer, they shouldn't even call it that.
Well, I mean, I'm not gonna sit here and speak for Motorola.
I consider that table to be a table, okay? If it was hung on a wall, it would be a shelf, okay?
It's not a twenty-five thousand dollar piece of wood, I mean...
Well, see, I don't know what it is.
I understand.
And, you know, I'm the amateur at this stuff, and I'm looking at it going, man, a shelf to hang your computers on? We put all those racks in the basement for Dale's servers?
I didn't.
And those racks cost almost nothing.
I know that.
The rack, the rack costs very little.
I understand.
The servers are expensive. All right, I pounded on it hard enough here.
I mean, it is, it is hard to kinda understand that, Mike, I mean, on those consoles, you know, why do we need three of them? I just, I mean, you know, if we could understand it a little bit better, I think we'd probably be okay with...
Well, I thought the, what I have given you...
Well, I guess, you know, we don't do that every day, so we don't, you know, so when I look at that, I'm thinking, well, maybe you got three different dispatchers and they all need their own thing.
Right.
So, I mean, if you only got two, then we only need two of those.
Well, we need three for the interface and everything else. It, you know, short of having Motorola come down here, guys, and we get in the weeds, this breakdown breaks down the equipment, the labor, the parts, the whole soup to nuts, here we are. It's radio technology, we're updating twelve-year-old equipment, the hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars that we're putting into the dispatch center that is mission critical to what we do, we have not done that since the county has taken operation of the system. And like you say, there's other things, we don't blink an eye at the cost, but we have the system, we're not updating to anything that's a Cadillac, it's gonna be a system that what you would see in other venues that dispatch themselves as EMS services.
The city just did an upgrade, I'd say, a year ago on their system. Was that through Motorola, do you know, was that there?
I don't know what the city has done, I know what...
A W is putting down her...
Yeah, I know.
They didn't do the, they didn't finish the upgrade. They're still contemplating, like, they're at like nine hundred thousand.
Yeah.
At how much?
They were at like, they were at nine hundred thousand last I was speaking with them on the upgrade.
In terms of technology, the price you see here is, is very minuscule, uh, when you look at other places that have seven, eight, nine, ten consoles. We dispatch ourselves, we have that unique bittersweet obligation that we dispatch ourselves. And that throws an area of technology that the layperson, as you say, are not accustomed to seeing.
I understand that on some of the things like the M D C C fifty-five hundred dispatch control console with maximum control and liability for sophisticated conventional and trunky communication systems. That's a specialized thing, and I can see that more than I can see the L thirty-three fifty-eight A console electronic shelf for eight thousand dollars, and we got three of them suckers. I can't find a picture of it, I'm just trying to figure out if it's got blinking lights or if you can do airplane control with it too, because I understand where Mark's coming from, I know where you're coming from, I know we need to update this.
I know.
Mike, I'm not...
No, no, I understand.
It is antiquated.
I understand, this is the last thing I wanted to do today, is come up and present this, I mean, I completely understand that. But it is something that is my duty and obligation to present to you.
I know, Mike.
And short of having a picture and taking you somewhere, this is it.
Yep, I'm not yelling at you, by no means, I'm just sitting there choking on these prices.
I know, and I knew you guys were gonna choke, and I'm not afraid, I'm here. And we're gonna have to get through this, we're gonna have to get through this, and we're gonna have to discuss it. But please keep in mind, when we say yes to this or some other things, wherever we go, you have given a ninety-day construction window. It's gonna be ninety to a hundred and twenty days before I get this, so the more we delay, we are gonna be by far operating in two places well into the winter.
Well, this is the first time it's coming for us.
I understand it.
So that delay, you know, if we approved it today, if it's that far out, you're gonna be operating in two locations.
Go ahead, go ahead and hit me for saying this, your lack of planning does not constitute an emergency on our part. If we're gonna, we're gonna throwback Thursday, throwback Tuesday, what is today, Wednesday?
He's been on this.
My point being, you know, the fact, the fact that we're mulling it today...
Right.
Is not, I mean, if it takes an extra week, that's not this disaster that...
The lack of planning, I wanna hit, when the hammer fell to start this is when I met with the radio company. And we are here today, so the lack of planning...
So they took the time.
So the lack of planning and everything else trying to get this up here to you is where I'm at today.
Well, I'll tell you where I'm coming from, is whenever we were talking about doing the bump out, I would've liked to have had this pricing, an idea of, you know, just a placeholder, if nothing else, going, hey, guys be ready, cause I'm gonna come up in about three months when I get some numbers together, and we're gonna need another hundred and twenty thousand to update the radios.
We have that figure already in the FFNE, Jeff, but my, we did have somewhat of a figure.
It is in there, Debbie, then?
I budgeted a hundred and fifty thousand.
For the Motorola computers?
For FFNE.
All FFNE.
Okay, so if we do this, that leaves thirty thousand left for FFNE.
That was just a wild...
That is a budget figure, Mark, we did not settle on...
TVs and washing machine, but no dryer, they'll have to get a clothesline.
But, at one point I said a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand, too, so.
Okay, who's the radio guy? Can we have them come up here and get down in the weeds with them and say, why do we need an eight thousand dollar shelf?
I don't recommend that, Jeff, I rather...
You know, I'll tell you that, I, after doing real detailed Google researching up here, I don't have a problem with the shelf anymore. I'm having some struggles with some of the things, but, you know, if it's, if this is what we gotta do...
That's what I'm saying, I'm not here trying to ask for the Cadillac, I'm here with a base model, and like you say, the more you get into the weeds with what we've got here, this is not absorbent, considering...
It's just hard not to get in the weeds.
I understand.
It's a big number.
I understand that.
It's hard not to get in the weeds.
I understand that, and like I say, I did not wanna bring this to you, I mean, five years ago, Jeff, if I would've give you a number, it would multiply and triple and grow weeds and everything else, and he'd still be...
We got a local...
Choking at the number.
Who came in and told you what you needed for this and made the list and...
We have a Motorola salesperson whom we've engaged many times, John and I both, and then the...
Where are they from?
Wireless USA here locally, the Jeff City office.
Who used to be out there off of South Ridge, down there that side road?
That's A and W, that's, uh...
Are they?
That's Kenwood, that's what...
They're not Motorola anymore?
No, it's a totally different, uh, how do I say it, John, just totally different system, yeah.
What, I guess one of my concerns is, this is all hardware, what, what kind of maintenance agreement are we looking at? What, is that included, is there a warranty included?
Right, I, the warranty is what it is, it's twelve months, it is what it is. If something breaks within that window, they cover that, but we're not gonna get like a five or seven-year or an appreciable warranty to stand up on, but this covers training of the system, this covers the parts. As far as the software for the operation, it is what it is, it doesn't require a yearly maintenance agreement like other software does, I mean, it's just a standalone, here it is, there's no updates you gotta do every six months or two a year, so on and so forth with this system.
So there's no maintenance or any agreement on any of this?
No, no, it's like buying a iPhone, it is...
And is this, is this the part of your computer system then too? I mean...
The computer system is unique to the radio system, it operates and runs the computer system, so in essence, you may have, you will have to have a computer only for that, and then the other daily computer things that we're gonna bring over, we would continue to use. This adds another computer that would sit in a rack or on the floor, whatever.
So this is like a standalone computer that runs the radio?
Yes, and the screen, yes. You've been in places where you see the three screens and so on, that's, it's not uncommon, uncommon now to use two screens for daily operations. You do, Debbie, I do, yes.
Now I got a headache.
I know, I was just thinking that, too.
Nope, I wanna do this first, I, yeah.
I don't know, it's a first, it's gonna be... What about the, I mean, that's got Windows Seven, Server two thousand eight?
Yes.
When's that gonna be updated? Are they gonna come back a year from now and going, oh, well now y'all have to change these too and change that four thousand?
Windows, Windows Seven, short of being, having Dale here, but we're at the mercy of Windows, we just went through this with XP. Windows Seven does have a couple more years official life in it, but Jeff, we're at the mercy of powers that are much more in control of things than we are.
Right, but I'm saying that there's Windows Eight out there right now, so they're gonna come and say, hey, well, you know, now we just...
Why don't we use Windows Ten?
Yeah.
Windows is an updated, why not use the most modern version?
Because Windows Eight, uh, from a Dale standpoint and internal standpoint, it's not even, Motorola does not even endorse its use. It's Windows Seven, and that's the most current...
And I've heard there's problems with...
We gotta do this, we don't have a choice, we gotta have a radio system, we gotta get it in.
Yeah.
I'm unhappy about it. I know. If you can't tell. I know, I understand.
Um, I think that Motorola, yeah, on the record, I think Motorola's gouging us.
I understand.
Um, I think the state has not done its job in looking at what the fair market value of some of these pieces are. They probably went in and spent...
Spec Motorola.
They spent it all the time making sure that they got a great price on the radio, and I'm guessing, you know, whatever the price on the radio itself is, is a really great competitive price, and Motorola laughs all the way to the bank knowing that they can sell the monitors for three times market value to make up for the price. But in the end, this particular thing, we gotta do, we just don't have a choice, we gotta upgrade the system, the radio's the lifeblood of the system, that, we spent all this money upgrading the ambulances because we need it, so I'm okay with it, unhappily, but I'm okay with it.
I understand, it has been keeping me awake at night to bring this, trust me, I completely understand.
Who's got the design and layout of everything, so maybe I'll understand it more than it won't.
I guess, I guess from my standpoint, is this one's a big one to swallow because it all comes at once, and it's twelve years of, I mean, ideally had we, ideally had we done ten thousand dollars a year to upgrade our radios for the last twelve years, maybe we wouldn't be sitting at a hundred and twenty thousand, and I don't know, maybe that's not feasible.
That's not feasible from that, from that standpoint, no, and not to interrupt your train of thought there, but, but I don't plan, plan on coming back to you for radios for another twelve years, I mean...
Well, and we may not be here, but then when you come back and it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and the future commission has a heart attack because you're hitting them with new radios again.
You can, you can set aside monies, let's say this, it, you know, like we have with the fleet and everything else we do, there is money set, that we set aside for that, but to specifically set aside things to compete with Windows Nine, Ten, Eleven, and Twelve, we don't know, I could not forecast that.
My suggestion would be, let's do this, let's get the new system in, Mike, develop a plan so that we can modernize as we go forward, so that along the lines of what Chris said, we're spending five or ten or fifteen thousand dollars a year, keeping on the edge, as opposed to one day being told, everything you got's junk.
I know, that's what I'm saying, everything with this that I'm presenting to you now has hinged upon the expansion. Now that we're gonna move to a permanent home, the idea of setting aside and keeping us on the cutting edge of technology is a lot easier, because a lot of this, we couldn't touch other than maybe saving the money, which we have done, it's in there.
Thanks, Jeff.
But having us in a permanent home and getting us up to where we're gonna be now, it's much easier to reinvest in that, so yes, that, that is fully capable to be able to do that without having to choke every twelve years.
Or at least, you know, we're, we plan out eight, eight years or something, and so, you know, after we do this, I think it would be good to get that on that, on that projection or whatever, of what that life expectancy is on those radios, so that we can see that big dollar coming at some point.
We can handle this, now that we're gonna have a home to keep it in, now we've got that out of the way, I can handle this like I do the fleet, this year we're gonna replace this or that and the other, and give you a projection, a matrix, a graph, pinpoints, bullet points, whatever you want, yes, that, that's not an issue.
I think we gotta do it.
We got one server, two workstations, right?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just going through it all.
Yeah, yeah, it is, I understand, I don't have anything, I don't have any easy way to polish this to make it more...
What do you need from us?
...palatable. I will, if, approval, obviously, and then it will go to Jennifer, whom we'll get with Mr. Briggs and whatever contract or whatever is needed, I have no idea what, but this is soup to nuts, and when you approve this, we smack the gavel and we go forth and get this going.
And where is the, my one last question?
Yes.
Sorry, Mike, you made a mention about how long it would take to get in.
Uh, that is...
Where's that at in here?
One, we're gonna be at the mercy of getting parts, and in speaking with John, the day it's approved, it's about forty-five to ninety days, it could be a hundred and twenty depending, but worst-case scenario is, as the parts start filteringing in, they go to work to get them installed. So over a hundred and twenty days from today, we should be operating, but keep in mind, we've got training, we've got other...
I guess, I'm, it doesn't say anywhere in the documents in front of us, and maybe it's Jennifer Bush, no offense, Jennifer, I mean, I mean, they could, they could decide to install them in twenty sixteen.
Yeah.
I mean, there's no timeframe for delivery.
When you approve this, and when Jennifer does her magic, that sets the absolute time parameters to get this installed. So we've approved this expenditure, Jennifer will draw up a contract that Motorola will engage in, that will lay out the timeframe to get this in. I don't see them starting until 2016, Mark.
Well, I, I, I was just, you know, we gotta get this stuff in, I would just as soon say, we'll enter into the contract, I want it installed by September 30.
It's not gonna happen.
Or we're gonna just start, we're just gonna start chopping our, the amount we're gonna write you a check for.
I understand that, but we are at the mercy of Japan and Motorola and global variables that we do not control. They don't have the parts sitting somewhere.
They don't have any of this stuff in stock, is what you're saying?
No, it, it's literally, when you buy it, they literally make it, uh, like Motorola radios, the portables.
Get a, get a brand-new car in six weeks if I want to agree.
When they installed the three, the consoles there for the new facility, uh, we kept half the money until it was completed. I mean, that may be something that they can do, but we didn't give them their money until they completed.
Well, let's let Jennifer proceed and try to get it done as soon as they can, so.
We don't have a choice, it sucks. So why can't we do Kenwood?
We don't have Kenwood, the county personally, and it's an incompatible system, and I say that with, I understand completely, the state of Missouri, its system for soup to nuts is Motorola.
Buy stock in Motorola.
Alright, go forward, Jeff. Or do you wanna sit on it some more?
I don't wanna slow it up, I'm just having trouble.
Go, go, Mike, go.
I can't go anywhere 'cause we got furniture and stuff.
I know, but I'm saying, on this issue, go. Bring us a contract, obviously we gotta vote it.
At least I can chew on it until we vote on the contract.
You guys can sign it next week when I'm gone, if you want.
There you go, now you.
Jeff will approve it.
I, I'm not frustrated with that, I'm more frustrated with.
Jennifer will be presenting the contract, it will go to her side now?
It's all yours, Jeff, we're in a good mood now.
Yeah, I know, great. Your attachment, which is first, the furniture or the appliance?
Uh, furniture's first.
Okay, uh, we hope to have this done, we're actually gonna need a little more time. Um, we did get the complete proposals from Samco and Shreefer's. Um, I guess what I'm asking from you guys is just to kind of go down this list, see if anything catches your eyes completely unreasonable. And the reason we're kind of wanting to go back and get more information is because the bid's from 30 to 55,000, so whenever there's that big of a price difference.
It's 'cause some things are bidding, some things aren't.
That's because.
So like Samco bids a dresser.
Right.
And Shreefer's doesn't, that's $3,000 worth of difference.
That's what, and I took those out on the adjusted total, so there's the total, that's the room, you know, that they proposed, and then when Shreefer's did not bid the dressers, I took that out of Samco's, so that's what the adjusted total is reflecting, if they, it, it says apples for apples.
So it's an apples to apples?
As I can get it, yes, is what the bold adjusted totals are.
So where are the, the big differences at then?
Well, you can see the total per room difference, a lot of it frankly is in, um, the chairs. That's a big chunk, and so that's a concern, because, you know, there's, they're gonna have a lot of heavy use. And so, we just want the opportunity to, um, maybe touch base with the low bid and, and make sure we're getting a quality.
So it's not before us, I, I don't see any problem with the numbers that you got in here, I mean, on the, on the furniture, I don't have any issue with any of that stuff, it all looks fairly reasonable to me.
Okay, we just wanted to give you the range, and then a list of what we're looking at to see if anything red flags.
Uh, it just looks like standard stuff to me, I don't have any problem with it.
Okay, and then, as far as needing more time.
I guess, oh, there we go, trying to find it here. On the wrong page.
It's just furniture stuff.
There's no Escalade in there that I saw on.
Nope, didn't see one either.
Yes.
Motorola already sold us one, so.
We don't need two in the driveway, although for what we're paying Motorola, we could get two.
As far as needing more time on this, I wouldn't think it would take a whole lot more time, and we are sort of, some of these potentially have six-week lead times plus then the install, so we're sort of right in that area, so I kind of wanted to get approval to talk about this again, semi-soon here in the next, I don't know, schedules.
I guess I do wanna talk about furniture, so.
Okay.
Um, I thought we just bought some new mattresses.
We, we have the mattresses themselves, uh, this is gonna be what you would put the mattress in, the bed itself, the, the frame. Help me out here, Jen.
Mattresses are on there also, and this is à la carte, and so that's what I've asked EMS folks to do too, we're gonna go down this, you know, there's gonna be some things crossed off, there's gonna be some things added to, so that's kind of what we're doing. Next time we meet, we hope to come up here with, hey, this is what we want, this is a list of what we want, how much it is, but now we still need a little bit of homework as far as, you know, the quality of what we're looking at. Mattresses are included, if we have mattresses that can be moved, we'll take those off as à la carte, so.
We, we didn't purchase mattresses for the South Ridge, those mattresses were for the outlining satellite stations, and please keep in mind, Chris, that we're going from two very small Spartan bunk rooms that Jeff got to see the other night, and Jeff, thank you by the way for helping us out on that.
Yeah, explain why I got to say it, don't be, just leaving that out there, you never know.
We, we suffered some storm damage and lost a couple of windows in the bunk rooms, and Jeff was gracious enough to come in and help secure that, so.
I was scared.
We're moving from those to a larger space, so we're, but we're buying more mattresses and, and things of that nature, so to answer that question, Chris, we defer that to the expansion here, and it's just for South Ridge only, the other mattresses were for the outlining stations at Brazil, Apache Flats, and other places.
Okay. What type of beds are we getting, is this something that Jen, that you can?
I didn't bring it, the, the Samco ones are sort of a wood dorm looking.
Are they a steel bed, or?
The one from Shreefer's is, the one from Samco's is wood.
Okay, I think that plays a big, big difference there, I mean.
Samco has given a rating for chairs and beds, they're commercial industrial, hotel motel, I mean, they're made for continuous use, whether, if it's steel or wood, they're both commercially rated.
When we come up here again too, I'll have hopefully the weight ratings, the warranty, all that listed also.
Okay, um, I guess I'd like to see what you need, I mean, I, I see fiber rocker recliners here, um, you know, I, I mean, I, I'm, I'm floored at a $400 dresser, I mean, I can't imagine that they're, they have that many clothes to store. One change of clothes, I would think, I mean, I don't know, maybe, maybe two, and, and we need seven dressers for 400 bucks. I mean, a nightstand for $180, I mean, I just, you know, some of this stuff, it, I don't know, it, it seems exorbitant to me. An end table for $310, coffee table for $387. And then chairs for work surface, five of them at $756 apiece.
24-hour continuous duty, commercially rated, uh, I think.
What's the warranty?
Jennifer.
On the, the Samco one, we'll have to come up with that specifically, Samco had a package, we'll still need to get some more information from Shreefer's.
I ran into that same problem with the chair and.
I was gonna say, Jeff, you remember that?
Yeah, and y'all explained that, I'm fine with that, but the rocker recliners, I agree with you, that one, we don't even have those in our offices. I might be here all day long, if we have a 24-hour shift, I'll work two days, and we can have meetings, we'll have seriously long meetings in like today.
Again, I guess we'll narrow it down to, um, the recommendation of the EMS people, and then again, it'll be all.
Are those in the dayroom, or where are those at?
The recliners are in the dayroom, yes.
This is broken down by room.
Oh, right there where it says dayroom?
Yes, I mean, not to be smart, please don't.
No, it was right there, I didn't see it, sorry.
Yes, and, and like I say, guys, we're, we're moving into a substantially larger facility, and.
So we'll get a couple more tables and some.
We're not investing everything into it right now, but with the number of people that it will accommodate, that we accommodate now without the furnishings, we're adding more to it to meet the current demand. We're not expanding five years from now, we, we are gonna accommodate, accommodate the demand that we currently have that we're not able to.
What's the demand for rocker recliner chairs though, I, I don't, I mean, they can be doing something, washing the.
Yeah, I'm not, I mean, I'm not, I'm not here to, to debate.
Okay, can I, can I make a suggestion, just because we're, we're now digging into a spot where I think Jennifer's already indicated we don't need to go yet, which is, why don't you guys go through and figure out what you need? Mike, you've kinda heard bits and pieces of commentary, go back, figure out what you need, then bring it back with, here's what we need.
I, we've already done that, and.
So everything on here is what you need?
I, I hate.
So you need seven dressers or zero dressers, that doesn't make any sense, see what I mean, Mike?
We'll come back, we'll come back, Mark, I mean, it is, it is what it is, and.
Well, they're saying they need seven.
Okay.
I've heard one, I've heard need, and, and I'm not here to tell you what I.
Well, no, I'm just saying, I got different numbers from the two bids, Jennifer said she equi, equalized, I don't remember what term you used, equalized them so that they're apples to apples, but to do that, you took stuff out.
Right.
So my question is, Mike, do you need those things or not need them, because I don't understand how it's.
She took them out to normalize the bid, she did not take them out because we did not need them.
Okay, that, see, I didn't understand that.
That's what I'm trying to trickly.
And they may not need all seven dressers, they wanted, whenever the EMS folks sat down with the two vendors, hey, this is our, this is our wish list, this would be great. Now, I'm gonna go back to them, I've talked to them this morning, go back, narrow it down, hey, this is kind of.